Good evening Yorktown, welcome to the town board meeting for Tuesday, June 16th, 2020. I ask everyone to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible. And just as for all.
Thank you, and if you could please join me in a moment of silence. Keeping in our thoughts and prayers, all of the men and women serving overseas, protecting our freedoms, all of our frontliners, first responders, all of our medical professionals. And all those who continue to fight oppression and racism in our country. Thank you. Hi, again, my name is Supervisor Matt Slater, joined by my colleagues, we have councilperson Alice Roker, we have Councilman Vishnu Patel, Councilman Tom Diana, Councilman Ed Lacterman. We also have with us our town clerk, Diana Quast, and our, it says A-Rod, but you're not really A-Rod, and our town attorney, batting cleanup, Adam Rodriguez. Adam Rodriguez, and of course, we also are joined, I see that we have our town planner, Director of Planning, John Tegger, and I believe we also have our HR Director, Margaret Spurring, with us as well. Happy to provide us a report. So today I wanted to provide a report on updated COVID-19 numbers. The numbers we received from the Department of Health now have forty-nine active cases in the town of Yorktown. In comparison, we had on Friday fifty-eight cases, so we have seen a decrease in the total active cases. Again, I explained this over the weekend, so I'm gonna try to do it again. Active cases, as defined by the Department of Health, it's frankly not scientific, it's fourteen days. So if you were tested positive within a fourteen-day period, you were considered an active case. So again, that number for the town of Yorktown today is forty-nine, and we've had six-hundred-and-eighty-four total cases for our community. I also want to provide some deeper information on that forty-nine. More than half, more than half are in our nursing homes here in the town of Yorktown, and our thoughts and prayers are with all of, all of the members of our, of our nursing homes and all the staff as they continue to battle this. But it's, we've seen this across the state, that nursing homes have been, and our rehabilitation centers have been a real problem combating COVID-19. And it's no, no different here in Yorktown. But overall, we continue to see a decline in active cases. Again, today, we saw an ink, we saw three new active cases for the town of Yorktown. Yesterday, there was only one, on the tenth, there was two, on the ninth, there were only two. And on the eighth, there were zero, actually, we had no new cases reported on June eighth, and on the seventh, we've only had one new case. So again, we're not seeing drastic spikes. And overall, those numbers still continue to decline, and I really want to thank the community for the incredible job that they've done, really embracing the social distancing, wearing your masks, and, and increasing your, your personal hygiene, washing your hands, and, and taking all the necessary precautions to help us flatten that curve. Currently, we are in phase two, and, and I know a lot of people have been enjoying the outdoor dining experiences that the town now has. I spoke with the Fershey family earlier tonight, and they, and they are doing, just, they're very happy, put it that way, they're doing very well with, with their crowds, and we've seen expanded outdoor dining in a number of our, our eating establishments, and also in our, in establishments that originally had outdoor dining. So please, again, to our neighbors, support our local businesses, our Main Street businesses, and, and enjoy a great meal at one of our restaurants. Phase three is expected to start, phase three is expected to start a week from today. And so we are hopeful that we continue to flatten the curve and, and the numbers allow us to enter phase three. The Jefferson Valley Mall plans to open as part of phase three. In addition, we've been told by the Governor's Office that our workforce here in the town will be able to return to one hundred percent, which is, I think we're all very excited for. Right now, the plan is for our workforce to return at a hundred percent, and we're gonna get everyone re-acclimated with all of the, all the new social distancing parameters, and, and make sure that we have all the necessary equipment for our staff, and then we can begin putting plans in place to slowly reopen our facilities to the public. Again, they do remain closed, but we do remain functional, there is the, the drop box outside of Town Hall, which we still utilize on a daily basis. I want to thank two of our Parks and Rec Commissioners, Commissioner Talbert and Commissioner Campabasso. On, on Sunday, I was out doing the My Brother Vinny Walk, and I know that Councilman Lacterman's gonna speak about that. And I did it over at Sparkle Lake, which is, you know, one of my favorite places in town. Unfortunately, I was really upset with the amount of litter that was all over Sparkle Lake. And, and I want to thank the two Commissioners because they joined me at Sparkle Lake, and we walked around and we picked up all the trash that we could get our hands on. And I really got to remind folks, it's a thousand-dollar fine. It's a thousand-dollar fine if you're caught littering in the town of Yorktown, we double that fine, we're not messing around. We've increased our litter camera inventory, and they are, we do have our litter cameras, multiple litter, litter cameras out in high litter places. The board, we're gonna be putting to public hearing, the public hearing's coming up to make the thousand-dollar fine, to codify the thousand-dollar fine as part of our code. But it's not just, it's unfortunately not just Sparkle Lake, it's our trails as well, and it's great that these natural assets are getting the exposure they are, but we have to respect them. And it, and it really is just so disheartening when you bring, and I can just speak, you know, as, as a dad, when I bring my kids to Sparkle Lake or to Sauvignon Glen, and there's trash and litter everywhere. It really, it really is disheartening, it really discourages the use. So please, again, and I'm not talking about, I'm glad I'm not talking about specifically gloves or masks, but it was just litter and trash. So again, please respect the town, respect your neighbors, respect our families, and, and respect the environment by not littering, it's carry-in, carry-out. And, and I've seen way too many pictures the last week from people all over town utilizing our great assets that, that frankly have had to overcome an enormous amount of litter, and again, it's completely unacceptable. Happy to report that our water department is, is moving quickly on the new law that the town board approved. And so for our, those who have large, there's one and a half or larger water meters, you're gonna be receiving a letter in the mail as a reminder, those water meters are supposed to be tested every three years. We provided some additional teeth to this law to make sure that it's actually being tested. Something that I, our, our water superintendent Ken Rundell's been fighting for, for north of twenty years now. So you will be receiving a letter in the mail instructing you about the required testing. It also provides you with some meter testing companies that the water department graciously provides. So if you do have a, a larger water meter, a commercial water meter, which again, which is one and a half inches or more, be on the lookout for this, the letter instructing you about the next steps in the water meter testing process. Received a great note from our friends at Spark here in Yorktown, one of our great nonprofits. As a reminder, Spark continues to provide services, and they've expanded their virtual programs. They are starting some adventures, some adventures, trips and outings for individuals with disabilities in July. June twenty-fifth, they're gonna be holding a fundraising event, it's a virtual event, we're gonna post the link on our, on our, our social media pages as well as the website. But it's just a great, great nonprofit here in Yorktown, and, and we really do appreciate all the services they provide for our special neighbors, and so again, that's from our friends at Spark. On Monday, the planning board approved nineteen-sixty-one Commerce Street, that's the old MNT Bank building. That is gonna, that was approved for a complete renovation, including improvements to the sidewalk along, that would be Veterans Road. So we've seen some, we've seen some really promising renderings of what the building's gonna turn out to be, but it's great that one of our underutilized storefronts is gonna get a nice facelift, I believe it's been vacant for, for three to four years now. Again, that's the MNT Bank, right across the street from Seven-Eleven. And lastly, I want to just touch upon some of the events that, that have been happening in our community over the last week. I really want to thank, first, I want to thank our, our police department for their incredible professionalism. We've had two now, we had one today and one last week, we had two demonstrations, and they've really provided some incredible insight and really helped move an important conversation within not just our society, but our community, and we are taking those, those comments and conversations very, very seriously. We've seen, obviously, Governor Cuomo has taken, and the legislature's taken some very quick action, and we are awaiting additional guidance from the Governor's Office about next steps. But as a reminder, some of the components that the Governor has pushed forward is a policy review to address trust and fairness for, for all police departments in the state of New York, for, for local governments to convene a task force, to develop a plan, to provide a plan for public, public comments and, and ratification, and then provide it to the state of New York. Now, what I want to emphasize to the public is, again, and I said it earlier, just how professional our police department was, and I also want to thank the, the organizers because they really did respect our community, quite frankly, there were no issues, there was no vandalism or any, any negative, negative parts to any, any of these org, any of these demonstrations that we took part in, and then all of our elected officials did take part in them. And so again, to our organizers, thank you, but for the Yorktown Police Department, I think it's really important to, just for folks at home to understand. Two thousand and nineteen, there were five-hundred-and-forty police agencies, of those five-hundred-and-forty police agencies, only twenty-nine percent, twenty-nine percent were accredited by DCJS, and DCJS is a, is an acronym, but it's the agency that oversees police departments, law enforcement in the state of New York. The town of Yorktown is one of the twenty-nine percent. And, and it really is a testament to the level of professionalism, how they conduct themselves. The, the process to become accredited is very intense, and, and we've been accredited multiple times now here in Yorktown. And, and so when we continue to read through what the directive is, the sense that we get is that this is really directed towards the majority of the, of the law enforcement agencies that are not accredited. And so I really think that it's important for folks at home and, and the public to recognize, one, that you do live in a community with an accredited agency by the state of New York, which is again, is a, is a just an absolute tribute to their, to their abilities, conduct, and professionalism. So when we go through this process, and we're gonna go through this process, and, and it's really important, I think, as leaders for us to be a part of these conversations, which is why we've continued to participate in the demonstrations that have taken place within our community, because we need to hear the concerns, and we need to digest those concerns and understand those concerns, and we need to have conversations about those concerns. And then we can develop the necessary policy to address them, and that's one of the reasons, again, today was, was no exception. All of us, I believe, are over at, in East Main Street up in Shrub Oak, where Lakeland alums put together a very powerful demonstration discussing their concerns within our community. But again, I just want to emphasize that our police department has proven time and time again to be just, you know, a model department, quite frankly, in a lot of ways, and that's been verified by the state of New York itself. And so we're gonna continue to work through this, I, I will say also, by the way, following the, the first demonstration that we had, where we had close, we had over, I think, a thousand people here in, in the Heights Hamlet. You know, we quickly began having conversations about what we can do here in town government, and, and it starts also internally, and in looking at our policies, looking at our procedures, you know, things that I, you know, I frankly assumed we already had in place, things like diversity training, things like equal employment opportunity policies, and, and we've looked at those parameters, and, and clearly, those are things we need to improve on from a town government standpoint, because diversity training frankly isn't, isn't offered. And so we are already in touch with folks and organizations who provide that type of training to our employees, and we intend on, on executing that, and to me, that's just common sense. It never hurts to make sure that people understand how to interact with others in a, in a professional way, and so, but that's why these, these conversations, and, and for some, it may be uncomfortable, but that's why they're so important, because it forces you to reflect on yourself, your organization, and find ways to put, to put those words into action. And so, again, we're gonna be continuing that process, the Governor's laid out a plan for that process to take place through the next, next ten months until April of next year. And, and I think for all communities, it's an important one to take, because you're gonna be able to reflect on your, on, on the, on the protocols that are in place, the procedures that are in place, and we can do it in a collaborative way. And here in Yorktown, again, I think it's gonna provide an opportunity for our police department to once again establish itself as a model department for communities across the state to look at and see the great things that they've done, and just look at today. Look what they accomplished today, it was posted on social media by the police department, but there was a, an arrest made today that included a very suspect who is a suspect in a murder case. I mean, that's what they do on a daily basis, and, and, and so again, our hats are off to our, our police department for just the tremendous work they continue to do, and we're looking forward to partnering with them and making sure they're a part of this conversation that we're gonna have. And, and that concludes my report to the town, Councilwoman Roker, would you like to provide a report?
Yes. You know, I just want to say thank you to the young people from both the Yorktown Central School District and the Lakeland School District that want to see change. And I think these are wonderful, wonderful young people, and I think the only way that change comes about is, is by our young people. But I do want to talk about our police department. One of the things that the chief said is that if you wanted to see their use of force policy, it's right on their website. He said it's been there for a year.
Yep.
He's not hiding it. I am, you know, it is wonderful when you, when you, well, I, I remember being here in nineteen ninety-one when they were first accredited, and it was a big, big ceremony. And, you know, like you said, not many departments come under the discretion of the DOJ.
Right.
I am, I am, I am thrilled that we're able to say we have a good police department who we would put up as a model.
Absolutely.
For any other police department. Then, and I'm very happy to hear about diversity training, you know what? I've gone through it several times, and I think that what it does, it just reminds you to be professional when, or when you encounter, particularly when you're in Town Hall or in any of our other buildings, and someone come from the public wants something from you. It's, it's not a bad thing, I think. I like the idea of learning something new every day, I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I, I think we'll be better off for the training.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Lacterman, would you like to provide a report to the town?
Sure, well, you know, talking about the police, you know, I've always been an advocate and think that our police department in general is fantastic. Another couple of things that we don't realize how they help in the community. Last, this past week, we had two life-saving events as well. We had a Narcan administered to someone, actually, they had to administer two doses. So that person would not have been coming back from that if our PD was not as fast-acting and, and making these, making the decision to help this person. And the other one even goes to speak to the training that our department receives on a day-in and day-out basis, where someone called nine-one-one, and then basically said, oh, never mind. And something did not sound right, and the, the dispatcher made the call to dispatch a squad car to that, that home, and found the person had made a makeshift noose and was going to commit suicide. But because of the training that they received, they, they heard something wrong, reacted to it, and took care of it. And, you know, it, to me, it's, it's very painful when you hear that, that our police don't care about people based on color, race, you know, and all this other, these, these other parameters, but I think, you know, this just goes to speak about the fact that you don't know who's on that phone. It's not a picture call, and, and they, they make the decision based on doing their job. Our police department is phenomenal, and, you know, I appreciate the job they do day in and day out, and it's one of the reasons that my family and I stay in Yorktown. That being said, we also have some other exceptionalism that knows no barriers with, with our charity groups. And this past weekend was the virtual walkathon for my brother Vinny. For those of you who don't know, my brother Vinny is an organization set up by one of our residents, Paula Miratello, in honor of her brother Vinny. Vinny died at, I believe, nineteen years of age, he was severely handicapped, he was non-speaking, and she wanted to do good deeds in his name. She does a lot of great things, but what, one of the things Paula has, has latched on to has been trying to help those that have defended our country, those that have defended our rights and freedoms in the military, and especially those in need, that come back and do not have a place to live, or when they do get a place to live, they have nothing in that place to live. So Paula and her group, that is one-hundred-percent volunteer, lines up with other veterans who she's helped, which are, there's a, a lot to choose from, because it's over a thousand veterans that she's helped in this manner. They get furniture now mainly from hotels, and they get stuff donated through companies. So they are able to help these veterans when they get a, an apartment or a box, I will say, because that's all it is, it's four walls and nothing inside of it, she makes it a home. She gets them furniture, bedding, kitchen wares, utensils, small appliances, plates, all donated, linens, and it's just such a wonderful, wonderful organization. I know we're gonna hear from another one of our great organizations later, but, you know, Yorktown is just exceptional, and you know, I think, I think we should all be grateful for what we have here, and, and, and we, we really want to make sure that we are supporting these groups, and Paula, it was a great walk, we even had my eighty-five-year-old mother-in-law running around the streets. Our goddaughter Maxine came to walk, so it was, it was a really, it was a great thing that she did, and we wish them continued success, and if you want to find out a little bit more about them, you could look at, look them up on YouTube, because there've been a couple of news reports about them, and you could also look at mybrothervinny.org and read about what they do on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Patel?
I will be sick and sharp. And I will not repeat anything, anything said by anybody else, but let me state that Yorktown class of twenty-twenty, Ken Brown graduate from West Point Military Academy. And it was a special kind of day and a special ceremony. How do I get cut off? Okay. Hello?
Yeah, we, we can hear you.
Yeah, we just got cut off, okay, anyway, so he was commissioned, he graduated from West Point on June thirteenth, and he will be getting his next training for infantry basic officer training, and then he will be moving to Army Ranger School, and he will be posted in Hawaii. So congratulations, Kenny Brown, he lives on a Giorano's, just not to far away from Town Hall, and I offer my congratulations, and also, on behalf of the town, if anybody wants to say later on, you can say that, so thank you and good luck to you and all your classmates of twenty-twenty, because this was a very special event, and it has never happened in the history of the West Point Military Academy, the President of the United States, he was there at the president's, and so many other dignitary, but no parents were there. So congratulations to, from the town of Yorktown. The second thing I want to say is that there was a, some food pantry at the St. Mary's, there was a lot of food collected and was given away by Peter Haccam's and the volunteers at the event court, it was a really nice event, that people came and, you know, this is the time, we combine the goodwill and care about the people. And the last thing I just wanted just to say, really, this is my, my COVID little science, I wanna, I wanna brag about you. You know, the, the, the COVID virus, they easily hijacks, you know, our, our cells, and turn them into virus factory and pumping out copy of their viruses. This is really, really, really dangerous virus. Now mutated cells are, you know, the virus material cells, they go try to get into the cell, but mutated can go and stick it because of their mutations, and then not only that, they allow them to go into the cell. And this is where we got into trouble, so now we are worried about how we are going to treat with the drugs. Let me tell you, these viruses are resistant, you know, and, and they control, you know, their, their behavior, the virus, okay, we have no control over the virus. The second thing, when, when we make a vaccine, the virus is going to get around it. So we are in a big trouble, and I ask each and everyone in our community, please protect yourself by using the mask, and I urge each and everyone, please don't throw any water bottle or something on the road because it has a liquid, some coffee cup, the juice or something, and I've been seeing lots of new things now that is called a mask in the store anywhere you go, please keep it, dump it in, in a dumpster where you go, but do not throw on the road or wherever you go for shopping and all that, and same thing with the gloves. Thank you and be safe to everybody.
Thank you, Vishnu.
Thank you, Councilman Patel, and Councilman Diana.
Thank you Supervisor, and hello, Yorktown. I want to thank Police Officer Mattias and Campion for their expertise in reviving that young lady that, with the Narcan from the overdose. You know, once again, we dovetail back to our police department, are well-trained, well-educated, well-oiled machine. Only one, the best in Westchester County, thank you to the chief and everybody in that department. I also want to thank the police department for everything they did for both of the, I hate to call them protests, informational gathering events. That they went smoothly, and I also want to thank the, the people that, that formed those events that made them go so smoothly. Another one of our departments that seems to always go above and beyond are our fire departments. Fire Department had a structured fire up in Jefferson Village. I guess it was two weeks ago now. And to add insult to injury, we had a water main break at identically the same time, all right?
Around the corner.
Right around the corner, right, I mean, within, within seventy-five yards. Um, our water department was quick to respond. They didn't lose water at any point in time. The water, um, main was repaired and the fire was put out. Thankfully, there were no injuries. There was some smoke damage and water damage to the, uh, particular home, um, but everybody was okay. But that just shows, shows you how a community comes together. If a community can come together for something like a fire and a water main break, we certainly can come together for our own people. Um, and to kind of dovetail off of, uh, what the supervisor was saying before, our places of business are, uh, our, our, our eateries are opening up and many of them do have the outside dining. So please, um, please utilize this. Uh, we had actually gone to the winery last week and it was a lot of fun just to sit outside and have a little dinner. And tomorrow morning, we're going to the Mahogany Diner to have breakfast. So, um, you know, support your local places, folks. They're there for you. Please utilize them. Have a good night.
Thank you, Councilman. And I, I was over at that, uh, that fire and I was, because we were originally were down at the Lakeland, uh, Senior Parade at the mall. I came up the hill and I'm standing there and I've got a fire here. I've got a water main break here. And I said, if this doesn't show you what my twenty twenties like, nothing will. Nothing will.
We had snow in May, Supervisor. We had open and a fire and a water main break. I mean, it doesn't get much worse than that.
Yeah, yeah. But, and to our friends over in Nutley Circle, I don't know if anyone's listening, but we do, uh, obviously remember you. Uh, the, the water main break was one of the worst I've seen. It actually looked like the street looked like it was an earthquake.
Wow.
And so our water, our water department came and they tried to address the road. Ultimately, it's, uh, it's been determined that we have to, uh, frankly, contract out for it because it's such a big job. And we're working with our highway department, uh, to do that. So don't think we forgot about you. It's, uh, it's very much on the radar. We're in our highway department and our highway superintendent is working diligently to get that done. And speaking of our highway superintendent, uh, in, I understand that he's unable to join us tonight in lieu of his report. Uh, we're going to have our town clerk. I will add that my understanding is that the, uh, Mahogany Avenue retaining wall is moving along very, very well. Uh, and, and I, I was with, um, Will Batista of our engineering department this, uh, this afternoon. Uh, and he continues to be on site on a daily basis and provided a very, uh, very uh, productive report and, uh, and the construction's moving along very well. So. And with that, our town clerk wants to provide some comments on the upcoming election.
Thank you, Supervisor. I just want to clarify some things about, um, the early voting that's taking place this week. Early voting for the Democratic presidential primary, and it's also for Democratic and Republican primary. It's being held, um, if you want to early vote at the Albert A. Capellini Community and Cultural Center. Look, it's in the gym area located at nineteen seventy-four Commerce. Uh, the hours for the rest of the week are Tuesday, June sixteenth till eight P M. tonight. Wednesday, June seventeenth, eight A M. to four P M. Thursday, June eighteenth, twelve P M. to eight P M. Friday, June nineteenth, eight A M. to four P M. Saturday and Sunday, uh, June twentieth and June twenty-first will be twelve P M. to five P M. On Tuesday, June twenty-third is Primary Election Day. We have been condensed down to three polling locations. Those locations are Copper Beach Middle School, located at thirty-four hundred Old Yorktown Road. The John C. Hart Memorial Library, which is located at eleven thirty East Main Street, Strabok, New York. And the Albert A. Capellini Community and Cultural Center, located at nineteen seventy-four Commerce Street. Please use the back entrance that go, uh, leading in from Veterans Road to the back of the building. Um, if you're voting, if you're in a District one, four, nine, eleven, thirteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-eight, thirty-eight, forty and forty-one, you will be voting at Copper Beach Middle School. If you're on District, uh, five, ten, twelve, fourteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-seven, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-nine and forty-two, you will be voting at the John C. Hart Memorial Library. If you're in District two, three, six, eight, fifteen, eighteen, twenty-six, twenty-nine, thirty-five and forty-three, you will be voting at the Albert A. Capellini Community and Cultural Center. If you have any questions, please contact my office at nine one four nine six two eight one five two and we'll help you find out where you vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that information.
And may I say something? Can we put someplace in a website, this, uh, location and a district where they can vote for this primary, uh, and early, uh, voting? This way people have, uh, access to newspaper advertising as well as the town website and then from the town, uh, your office. Uh, so more than one way they can find out.
We've already done that. We posted on the government channel as far as early voting. Uh, we will be doing the rest as soon as we have one hundred percent confirmation from the Board of Elections.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for the information. We're going to move on to proclamations, uh, and we have, uh, a proclamation today. And before I read it, um, you know, it was funny because we were, when we were up in Strabok today, uh, we heard a, a few speakers, uh, quite a few speakers. Uh, and it struck me because again, and this also goes back to the week prior with the demonstration that was here in town. You know, this is an important educational moment, I think, for many people. Um, you know, I, uh, I grew up in town here. I graduated from, uh, Yorktown High School, a product of our local school district. I frankly wasn't aware of, uh, of this day of Juneteenth and its meaning until I was out of school. Um, and, uh, uh, maybe I just overlooked it. Um, but it, it has a really profound meaning for a lot of people. And, and I think it's important for the town and the town board to recognize, uh, the day and its meaning. Um, and so the, the proclamation, uh, declares or proclaims, June nineteenth, twenty twenty is Juneteenth Day, Juneteenth Day in recognition of the end of slavery. And I'm going to read it as follows. Whereas Juneteenth is recognized as the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln first issued the Emancipation Proclamation effective January first, eighteen sixty-three, freeing the slaves in the South. However, the Southern slave owners ignored that order. On June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas and enforced the president's order freeing the slaves two and a half years after it was first decreed. This day has since come to be known as Juneteenth. And whereas Juneteenth has been also titled June-June, Freedom Day, Emancipation Day and Emancipation Celebration. And whereas Juneteenth celebrations have been held to honor African-American freedom while encouraging self-development, education and respect for all cultures. Now therefore be it resolved, the town of Yorktown proclaims June nineteenth as Juneteenth Day in recognition of June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, the date in which Union soldiers ended, ended slavery in Galveston, Texas. And further be it resolved, the town of Yorktown reiterates its stance against all forms of oppression, racism and bigotry. And further be it resolved, the town of Yorktown supports the continued nationwide celebration of Juneteenth Day to provide an opportunity for the people of the United States to learn more about the past and to better understand the experiences that have shaped this nation. And I want to entertain a motion on the proclamation.
Go move.
All in favor?
Uh, uh.
Matt, may I say something about Juneteenth?
Yes, of course, Councilwoman.
Um, this is, um, people might wonder why this is important. Um, didn't Lincoln free the slaves? And he did. But this was the final day. This was the day that slavery officially ended in this country. And, and I know you didn't learn about it in school and neither did I. I learned about it in church. And I think very often when, when it comes to why we're seeing people out in the street today, a lot of it has to do with when we go to school, what are we learning? You know what? If, 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 if everyone, if all people were brought into the conversation, um, all Americans, regardless of where your ancestors came from, we would not be having these kinds of problems. Um, I think, I, I told you the other day when I, when I looked at it, that I, I thanked you for it. And it was and it will remain important to me.
Absolutely. And, and again, I, I go back to the speakers and, and the demonstrations and, and we've talked about education. And it's not just in our schools. It's not just in our schools. And this, I think this is a, a really, uh, important proclamation, a really important educational opportunity. Um, and, and, and I think it's, uh, it's an important, an important day for the town because to my knowledge, I don't think we've ever recognized it officially uh, in this, in this, in this way. And so for us to, uh, do so, I think really for those who have been so courageous and, and organizing demonstrations and, and voicing their concerns and their opinions, uh, on the matters that are, that are crisscrossing the nation right now. I think this is just another, uh, piece of evidence that this town, um, hears you. And we're, and, and it hears you and we're, and we're using our ability to educate our community, uh, on the atrocities of slavery and the importance of days like June nineteenth.
And you know, we were a town that had slaves.
Yes.
Um, when I said as town clerk, one of the most important books that I oversaw was the Book of Man Umissions. Um, it started, beginning of it was the book of children born to slaves. Um, because they weren't allowed to be put into regular bird book. And the last part of it was because of an act, uh, done in eighteen forty-two by the state of New York, uh, which was the Act of Man Umissions that allowed for, um, uh, slaves to be free.
And if my memory serves me correctly, Councilwoman, one of our cemeteries, I believe it was, is it Amawak? Is it the Amawak Cemetery? One of our cemeteries I thought was, uh, considered a, a, uh, a slave cemetery. Is that?
Well, the press, we, we know that from information that there was an area over near the Presbyterian Church. Um, that was supposed to have been set aside for slaves. Um,
Right. But again, that's part of this town and this municipality's history that
History.
We There, there are, uh, at the Amawak Cemetery, it's actually, I think it's part of the Friends Meeting House. There's a section of slave, uh, graves as they, as they're considered. There's also one of the gentlemen from the, uh, that fought in the Black Regiment buried there.
Hmm, wow. Wow.
From Canada.
Maybe that's a good project that we can, uh, engage our historical society on and, and our, our, uh, our, uh, Lynn Briggs and the, and the Landmarks and Preservation Commission on and see if we can, I don't want to necessarily bring it to life, but highlight it as, as an important piece of our, of our community's history.
Well, you know, the, 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 the interesting, interesting thing for me is when I would go out to school with a book and I begin to talk to kids about the fact that there were slaves in Yorktown, you could see their faces.
Yeah.
And it's like, no, that's unfortunately, that's the way it was.
Right.
Um, this is a, a community that has a wonderful, a wonderful history. And, um, I'm glad we have the, I don't know their new name, the Heritage.
Heritage Commission. Thank you. I was thinking about it when I was saying it and I knew I was saying the wrong one.
Because they are wonderful and I think they do a great job.
Uh, you know, and I think it's, I think it's important. And actually, Matt, you don't really have an excuse. Alice and I, when we were in school and Tommy, uh, Juneteenth wasn't recognized nationally. I don't think it was until seventy that it was, uh, recognized. And, you know, just talking about the advancements, but this is the importance of history, the importance of things.
Absolutely.
Uh, good, bad and different, you know, I, I learned.
Part of history.
I learned more going to a concentration camp about the Holocaust than I ever learned from reading a book. So, you know, these, these are important aspects, but I would also say that, uh, you know, maybe, uh, the, uh, what is it? The Heritage Commission now?
Heritage Commission.
Yeah, thank you. Um, they, um, sorry. They, they might want, they might want to talk to, uh, John Testa to see, because they, I know at the Lincoln Depot Museum, you think
Oh, yeah.
They'll do the Juneteenth. They have, they actually have the flag and they do a whole ceremony. I don't think it'll be held this year due to the COVID, but, uh,
Yeah, we were with Colin Smith, uh, county legislator, uh, from the first district who was from Peakeville. And I think you're, I don't think they're holding the, the Juneteenth parade as they normally do, which I've been to a number of times. It's a fantastic, fantastic event for the city. So we're going to move on to the poet laureate. I see we got John McMullin with us. John, how are you doing?
I'm doing well. Uh, this is from my coronavirus collection that I'm doing, Fools Rush In. In the middle of the coronavirus pandemics, some states never locked down and some came late to the party. Worse, when, when the lockdown relaxed, Georgia allowed massage parlors, tattoo parlors, barber shops, beauty parlors to be the first open. Bizarre. When other states relaxed regulations, residents raced to beaches, to the Lake of the Ozarks and took masks off and forgot social distancing. My state and my town have chief executives that keep residents advised of actions necessary to slow the spread and totally awful virus. Bottom line, my state and town saw the cases of infections and deaths go way down while these other states saw brand new spikes. When the protests began, some protesters wore masks and were careful what lovers were not. Pundit Derek Trudeau, author of Doonesbury, opined in a strip that this could be the new form of evolution to improve the species. Sounds very harsh, but it could be right on. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Always good to hear from you, John. Appreciate it. We're going to move on to presentations and we have with us, uh, we have a whole team from, uh, Yorktown Alliance for Safe Kids. We're joined by Tracy Kushner, Kira Brunner, Liz Talbert and Pat Talbert. I don't know if you guys are in the same house. Uh, but we're here to talk about, um, another resource guide. We did the resource guide collectively, uh, for COVID nineteen and now in response to, um, uh, the death of George Floyd and, and the, uh, uh, actions of so many in our community, we are now here to talk about a resource guide focused on diversity and inclusion. So I'm going to ask, uh, Alliance for Safe Kids, take it away.
Thank you. Um, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share some important information with the Yorktown community. For the past fifteen years, the Alliance for Safe Kids has devoted our attention to responding to issues that place our youth in harm's way. In recent years, Asks has included additional tools to make progress together toward a more diverse, equitable and inclusive Yorktown. But as recent events have illuminated, we understand we must do more. We cannot simply state that we are, that we are against racism. We must endeavor to be actively anti-racist with a commitment to providing more inclusive and supportive resources for the community. We believe that the most successful efforts in creating positive change come from listening. And we have been listening and reflecting and meeting with board members and community leaders to develop our statement, commitment and immediate action to support each other moving forward on the path to racial equity and justice. And we have our statement. We're going to try to do a screen share.
Great.
Uh, can I just make a comment about, uh, the, 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 uh, two-day event in the world?
Yes.
Is just to complementing what just recently said, the society functions, but it's functioning differently. It, it's function with a sharing awareness that we live in a privileged moment that any time can change. Life is no longer picnic. We adapt and survive together. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Are you able to do this, this, this screen share?
Liz, are you going to put the statement up?
Liz, you're still muted.
So sorry, my apologies. Um, it, it's up there. I don't know if we need to minimize the gallery, um, photos. I mean, I see it.
Could automatically switch over. Uh, are you hitting the share screen button?
Yeah.
Oh, there it is.
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I'll just, if you don't, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll just read it quickly. The Alliance for Safe Kids supports peace, social justice and equality in our community and condemns racism in all forms. We are committed to reflecting on our practices as an organization and widening the lens through which we serve our community. As we continue to work together with all of the sectors to strengthen the safety net that supports our youth and families, we are introducing the Yorktown Together Resource Guide for Diversity and Inclusion. This guide will provide tools and resources that encourage mindful listening, facilitation of conversations for change and opportunities for thoughtful service that promote racial awareness. And um, and now uh, the Yorktown, Liz is gonna actually present the Yorktown Together Guide. And um, what we're going to do, she's gonna present it this evening and it will be shared with the Yorktown community on Friday, June nineteenth in honor of Juneteenth celebration.
Oh, awesome.
Wonderful. Thanks so much, Trissy. Um, so as Trissy mentioned, the Yorktown Together Resource Guide for Diversity and Inclusion will make its debut on Friday. And currently, it's still a work in progress, but I wanted to give you a preview of what um, we will be sharing with the community uh, this Friday. So we have, as also Trissy mentioned, we've been working with um, uh, many, many community members. We've been working with families, um, our board members, mental health professionals, youth in the community ranging from high school students through twenty-somethings. Um, and when I say working, I mean, there's been a lot of listening and talking and more listening. And that, uh, you know, again, is, is, is the purpose of this guide, to facilitate thoughtful listening and, and caring conversations so that we can all learn um, to support diversity and inclusion in our community. So similar, similar to um, the COVID nineteen guide, uh, you know, we have made this uh, very interactive. So I, um, the first thing uh, on, on the left, the icon that you're seeing there, uh, we, we just, you know, this is such a wonderful visual because it really explains um, what Ask is. Ask is connected to every one of those twelve sectors and we share resources um, with all of them. And so that we can all be on the same page when taking care of our youth and families in our community. Um, so that, if you click on that icon, that will bring you to our, at the Ask Community Resource Guide. But for this particular guide, we um, added four categories uh, that we, we felt were going to be very helpful to the community. Um, we have conversations about race, some media resources, mental health and wellness, and then opportunities for thoughtful service. Um, so it's very simple. Just click on the guide and, and for instance, here we have a, a wonderful array of conversations um, or, or how to, how to start those conversations about race. And um, these links will take you directly to articles. Like for instance, uh, this one, How to Talk Honestly with Children About Racism comes from PBS. And it's very um, user friendly. There's lots of great information there. And although it is uh, an, an article about how to talk to children about racism, this information is so important for adults as well. So, and, and sometimes, um, you know, and, and explaining things in the more simple ways as if we're, you know, talking to our youth can, can actually be more impactful um, with, you know, with the adults um, in the community as well. Um, let me just get out of this for a second. My apologies. Oopsie, sorry about that. Um, and then I'm just going to bring you back to, to the homepage. If we were to look at media resources, which my gosh, there are so many important resources out there, but we were able to um, find some really uh, important videos. Some are short, four minutes, which is, you know, again, very user friendly and uh, you know, others can be, can go into more, uh, more in depth. Um, we have books listed, but we have, these are lists that have been put together by um, professionals. So it makes it, you know, we, we weren't listing just individual titles. And we're currently talking with the um, Heart Library because they have a list of books that are available to the community. So we're going to be including that list as well. Um, we have some assorted media. There's a wonderful, we love this resource, Common Sense Media. We share a lot of information uh, from them on a regular basis. And they put together a comprehensive list that included books, movies, apps, games. And it was just, you know, I, I just think such an important resource for, um, especially for families. Um, then we also have um, some websites uh, that we would, you know, hope that people would consider visiting to just learn more about the different topics. And some have wonderful ideas as to how they can um, you know, get more involved in, in their community. But these are, they're just, they're, and, and they lead to other resources as well, which is some, you know, sometimes that, that's why it's been hard to uh, for us to kind of hone, hone it in because there are so many important resources um, available. And then we have, so we've been working with um, some mental health professionals. We're very fortunate to have some mental health professionals that sit on the Ask Board. And um, a lot of the uh, resources that are in this category of mental health and wellness came directly from them. And also from other uh, organizations that we partner with, like the Youth Mental Health Project and, and NAMI. And you know, so these are all organizations that um, we know that, you know, we're getting vetted information from and are just, you know, happy to bring it all together to make it easy for the community to find the information that they need. Um, and then we have our opportunities for thoughtful service because I mean, what, what is more beautiful than really engaging the community in, in doing something that, that can be helpful um, to all. And I'm going to let Trissy and Kira speak a little bit more about that. But before I do, I again, just wanted to remind you that we are still adding resources to this guide and it will be shared on Friday. But I, I really um, implore the community to feel comfortable in, in sharing any resources or opportunities that they're aware of with me. They can just email me at Liz Talbert and my email is liz@allianceforsafekids.org. And I would be happy to um, you know, to review them or have a conversation with someone because uh, you know, this, everyone has different experiences and everyone has different um, you know, books, films or websites that they've come across. And, and to really build a strong and, and robust community tool to help all of us and navigate during this time, um, we need it to be a community effort. And, and we need the community to feel comfortable knowing that they can definitely share resources and ideas with us. Um, and with that being said, I'll let Trissy and Kira uh, explain a little bit more about the opportunities for thoughtful service.
All right, thank you. And I will just leave that screen up. I think that's perfect. Um, and I'll just reiterate um, with uh, Liz mentioned, with a focus on our youth, we often learn while we teach. And with this in mind, um, but we had, I had worked closely with Kira as a volunteer coordinator to, to think of different ways that we could really reach out to all sectors of the community and what would be a, a fun um, easy project to um, to, you know, to, to be able to include everyone. And we decided to do an Ask Read Aloud Challenge. Um, and that challenge would be for thoughtful change. And again, this um, this particular thoughtful service activity, the challenge will be kicked off on Friday, June nineteenth. And we will be, um, the, the end of the challenge will be June nineteenth, twenty twenty-one because our challenge is to be able to acquire five hundred recordings. And I'll explain what we're gonna do a little bit. But um, that we thought it was important to, to, to state that when children listen to books read aloud, they learn, they learn about people, places and how things work. They learn about emotions and feelings and how to use words to share their ideas. Hearing books read aloud starts children on a lifetime of learning. And then we also thought it was important, we came across um, a, a lot of information that talks about multicultural texts for a diversity of students can be shared, can be used to build awareness of other perspectives. And that children's books can spark intentional conversations. So with all of those statements involved, we, we really felt like we wanted to challenge you, the community, to read aloud for thoughtful change. And um, that would include a, a process for selecting your book that would um, and recording it and submitting it and sharing. And I'm gonna pass, pass over to Kira who works so closely with our um, with our in-house um, uh, community service team and is going to use some of the same concepts um, with the community as well as a new partnership in this project that she um, just included with the Heart Library. Okay, Kira.
Thanks, Trissy. Um, yeah, so this is a really exciting project and a really important one as well. Um, and we are so lucky to have such an amazing collaboration with the Heart Library. And um, like Liz mentioned before, they have just an abundance of books, not even for children, but for teens and adult as well. It's for any age group. And um, using those resources, those local resources that are, excuse me, here in Yorktown, um, we are putting uh, this challenge to a start on Friday. And uh, we encourage everyone to look at the books that are, that are here in Yorktown or maybe that you um, can get online. And select one that, that you learn, that you learned something from that makes you um, that makes you feel like you can make an impact and, and read it. It doesn't have to be, you know, mass produced. It doesn't have to be great quality, but it's you showing yourself as a community member, explaining that, that these are um, important conversations to have. And um, what better way to read a, read a book? And um, so this is a really fun project. Uh, you're just recording yourself and submitting it and it'll be shared throughout social media. And like Trissy said, we're hoping that within a year, we can get five hundred. Uh, which, you know, might sound a lot, but there's so many of us here in Yorktown and beyond as well. And this affects everybody in the community. So we're really excited to kickstart this. I read uh, my, the, the book, Juneteenth for Maisy, uh, which was such a great book. I learned a lot from it. It kind of just talked about um, how she remembers her ancestors' struggles and triumphs as they um, as they worked to get liberty. So that's gonna come out on Friday. I hope that encourages everybody to take part in this challenge. And um, and yeah, I, I, everything about this is just thoughtful and for the community, so.
And, and you're gonna definitely wanna see Kira reading um, Juneteenth. It's um, it's, it's just a wonderful book. We talked about how much, just, just in that process of, of um, gathering the right book and um, reading and, and understanding what you were reading, that there was so much awareness on the part of the reader before it even meets its first child. And how many children are gonna actually hear this read aloud book? So there's a, there's just a beautiful process here. And we think that it's a gentle way to make a, a huge impact. So thank you for that, Kira. And I'm gonna mention one other, um, eh, we, what we've included under thoughtful service as well. Because we came across such amazing um, social justice toolbox hour um, uh, that has, they had, what they, what they have um, in addition to many resources, but they include a lot of twenty-minute activities for families, classrooms and clubs. And we just feel like um, that, that there'll be um, our civic groups, our Lions and our, and our Rotary and our Elks, like there, I'm, I, I feel certain that, that there's gonna be a time where, where um, and you know, where a twenty-minute activity will bring so much awareness and educate and bring us together. And sometimes trying to come up with what that activity should be is really difficult. So we want, we wanna make that part easy for um, for the community. We wanna connect every single organization and every good person in Yorktown to good work. Um, uh, just the, and, and reference to the Race Amity site, um, I attended an eighteen-hour um, symposium this weekend that was absolutely amazing and includes so many opportunities for our local community. We, we worked very closely with Poughkeepsie, Peekskill, and then we did a national component. And there's so many opportunities for our organizations and our youth and our um, every, every sector of the community to become involved. Mindful Schools has, we, we've had so much practice with at-home uh, support for homework. And this has a K-12 curriculum that's, that's mainly reinforced at home and in the community. And just a beautiful um, uh, lesson plan and explains what the, what, what's gonna actually come from the, the experience based on the age of the child. And it has amazing resources. And um, Embrace Race, they, they are chock full of service projects and opportunities. So the mainly, we just want to, we want the community to know that we're gonna keep connecting really good resources, just good people to do good work. And um, and now I'm gonna shoot over to Patrick very quickly, who's gonna give you a, an, an update on the Ask Yorktown webinar series.
Thank you, Trissy. Yes, so due to the postponement of Ask's signature event, uh, which is to be held in March of this year, Save Life. Uh, we decided to move forward with the Save Life webinar series. Uh, we actually held our first webinar back on May eighteenth. It focused on managing stress and anxiety during COVID nineteen. So we are trying to uh, gear these webinars specifically to the current situation that we're all in, we're all facing. Uh, that was led by a Yorktown resident and a licensed social worker, Stephanie Carbone. And it actually attracted over seventy live attendees, which was amazing. Uh, so the recording of that webinar can now be found on the Alliance for Safe Kids website, allianceforsafekids.org. Uh, but following that webinar, we surveyed those that uh, attended and also community members to figure out what topics would be most helpful to them in these times that we're facing. And it would benefit the community moving forward. And one of the more popular, popular topic, topics that did come forward uh, was to focus on the demographic of people that have been laid off, furloughed, as well as recent college graduates who are entering a job market that they weren't necessarily taught about or prepared for during their college years. Uh, so we are announcing that the next webinar is going to be titled A, uh, Navigating Your Job Search During COVID nineteen. And it's going to be led by Katie Travia of Career University, who has uh, done workshops with Ask in the past, in-person workshops. Uh, and that is going to be held on July seventh at seven PM. So registration for this next edition of the Save Life webinar series will go live next week. And if anybody has any topics or specific questions that they would like to see covered in the webinar, you can go ahead and email us at info@allianceforsafekids.org and we can uh, try to pass it on, along to our webinar leader to include in her presentation. We look forward to seeing you on the seventh.
Excellent.
That, and that's all. Thank you so, so, so much.
Thank you all. We appreciate all you do for our community. You don't need five hundred, you need five hundred ninety-nine. Count me in. No problem. Happy to do it. Uh, but thank you so much for, for bringing this uh, together, for bringing these resources right to our fingertips. And that's, and that's the key, is it's so accessible, so easy to use. It's a, it's, it's, you know, you can just do it all right on your phone and uh, really be empowered to make a difference in, in our community. And so we really do applaud your efforts and, and dedication to always, always doing the right thing for Yorktown. So we really do appreciate everything that you do.
Great job, Ask. Way to go.
You know, but Trissy, pretty, hopefully one day we won't have to do this because people will get the information as they go to school. Um, but I think this is, this provides so much good information for the public.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
So much. We appreciate it.
Thank you for partnering here.
Thank you. Good to see you, Liz.
Thank you.
You too.
All right. We are moving to courtesy of the floor. And we are gonna give the controls over to our town clerk, Diana Quast. And she'll let us know who is going to be speaking and.
Is nobody speaking? I gotta say something. On behalf of somebody, I sent me a little note.
Okay, what's that, Councilman?
Uh, uh, there is a residence, the, within Patel, he lives next to the library. And uh, so this is for the town attorney, if I can, uh, you know, just mention his name. That the tree hits the, the residence uh, home and there was a damage. So there was some paperwork filed by the town clerk's office by him. He's, he's a attorney. So is there any action has been taken? His phone number is four, four, one.
I wouldn't get out that phone number on, on, yeah, you know.
No, no, he told me to, uh, I asked him, the town attorney, to call him and he has not received any uh, information in reference to this one. That's why I'm giving the phone, phone, phone number again. And he said, I can give them a phone number.
Yeah, you know, we'll do, we'll have, we'll, we'll have Adam connect with you directly on this. So you can give him the phone number so it's not done over. Yeah, you know, we'll do, we'll have, we'll we'll have Adam connect with you directly on this, so you can give him the phone number, so it's not done over, it's not broadcasted, so.
No, but I already have uh given to the town attorney and it was like ten days ago, something, so he called me twice again. And he cannot uh uh answer, you know, he cannot.
Adam, can you, can you work with Councilman Patel on this first thing tomorrow morning, please?
Yeah, that's okay, I'm just uh reading his note, okay, thank you.
Oh, I appreciate, I just didn't want you to give his phone number out uh for public consumption, so uh if. Mr. Rodriguez, if you can work with Councilman Patel on that first thing tomorrow morning, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're very welcome and we're gonna, we're gonna move to courtesy of the floor, uh again, to our town clerk, who do we have?
Susan, did you wanna speak at courtesy of the floor?
Yes, uh thank you, Diana, uh could it's Dr. If Dr. Tegmeyer is is um. Could he speak first, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, we can hear you.
Okay, uh yeah, Dr. Carl Tegmeyer, twenty-eight, twenty-two Farm Walk Road. Uh I'm here tonight really to speak about the construction of the outbuilding for the fluoridation equipment off the Catsfield system. Just little background, uh when this first uh came up in the fall of uh two thousand twelve. That we were looking to uh question whether we're gonna re-floridate the uh system or not. Uh I I was the point person for the dental community in Yorktown. I also was the point person during the hearing in January of two thousand thirteen. And I've been back to the board numerous times essentially to follow the progress of the of the uh fluoridation of uh. Refluoridation of the equipment. As I understand it, uh right now, the the town is wanting to get assurances from uh the state. Uh that the remaining money that's been uh awarded under the grant will be there before they start the construction. Uh of the outbuilding essentially. You know, I I serve uh on a statewide level, basically with the New York State Dental Association and also with the Dental Foundation. And also I've been the uh basically the co-chair of the Task Force of Special Dentistry. At Office of People with Dental Disabilities, again, for the last ten years. So I I do have frequent conversations with Dr. Dionne Richardson at the Department of Health. She's the head of the dental up there and overlooks the fluoridation. Uh she uh really speaks highly of our town engineer, that he's been advocating for us uh very well. Uh you know, whatever funding they do have, they've moved this up uh basically in priority. And she was like, nothing better than to see Yorktown get the fluoridation back. But I think everybody realizes that uh everything's really dependent upon the federal government. And whether, you know, money does come through to bail out the states during the COVID nineteen crisis. Uh so, you know, where does that leave us, really? You know, this delay has had consequences, we we go back to two thousand thirteen, pretty much when it was shut off. And first and foremost, you know, it's a public health issue. You know, you really can't have good health without good oral health. And many of the surgeon generals in the United States have said that. And this does affect oral health and that is one of the reasons why the Commissioner of Health, Dr. Shalita Amler. Came to us in January of two thousand thirteen to give testimony and supported it. Uh now, you know, children that were born around this time and have grown up in the town, unfortunately, they've missed the boat. The most important time to get fluoridation into the teeth, fluoridated to the teeth, between birth and six years old. Uh for this reason, these children, for the rest of their lives, really are gonna have what we call basically soft teeth. Or really suffer with more cavities than they should have. Uh the most recent studies that are out there, uh the most recent being the fall, coming out of Juneau, Alaska, was a Canadian study. Where fluoride was shut off, these children at the age six had sixty-three percent more cavities. Our own Department of Health in New York State looked at Westchester, which is eighty percent fluoridated versus Rockland, which is zero percent fluoridated. The children in Rockland had close to seventy percent more cavities. So, you know, this is something that basically, when you look at in real life terms, what does that mean? And hopefully it'll be school in the fall and the little guys will get on the bus and go off to kindergarten. That class, because there isn't community water fluoridation, will see twenty more cavities with twenty students. They go into first grade, another twenty more cavities. All right, they keep going year by year, more and more cavities. When you put a dollar figure to that, it's been, you know, filling a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars, and it starts to add up. Hopefully, parents have insurance, maybe they don't, it's an out-of-pocket expense. Uh my daughter lives in town, she has two children, uh she recently refilled uh her fluoride supplements. It was fifteen dollar copay for each one, that's thirty dollars, that's done uh three times a year. So basically, there's ninety dollars and she's been doing that for the last seven years, that's over six hundred dollars out of pocket. Now fluoride benefits everybody in the community.
Your time is up.
Yeah, what's that?
Time is up.
Time is up.
Time is up.
Doc, thank you, we appreciate your time.
No, I wish I had more time, thank you.
Doctor, uh you know, you are the one force behind this one and I'm looking at the picture of the Commissioner of the Health in Yorktown. And your picture right in front of my face right now, so thank you for all the help you try to give to this town.
Point being, it's a hidden tax and you're passing a lot of money on to the people and delaying any longer is really hurting the community and it's hurting the health. This town is known for bringing, is a great town for bringing up kids, we're ignoring them, we've been ignoring them and they're being, they're they're hurting because of it.
Doc, thank you, we appreciate it, uh you know, I do wanna remind everyone for courtesy of the floor, there still is a three-minute time limit. Uh and we should have instructed Doc, uh we should have instructed you, Doctor, of that and I my apologies for that, but there's a three-minute time limit. Uh so we're gonna uh move on with Diana, who else do we have, uh excuse me, Town Clerk Quast, who else do we have for courtesy of the floor?
Uh Susan Siegel.
Okay, tha- thank you, um. I think you've heard very clearly that Yorktown has a health issue with uh with the fluoridation. What I'd like to say is, please, Board, do not wait for the state to come across with its written guarantee. Uh proceed now with with that project, it's roughly seven hundred thousand dollars. And I mean, I know you're concerned about money, but let me give you several options for how the money is available. The Water District's fund balance, according to the two thousand nineteen audit, there's two point seven million dollars i- in the fund balance. I'm just talking Water District, there's a question whether the seven hundred thousand has already been subtracted. But let's say it hasn't, that leaves the fund balance of two, two mi- two million dollars. That's twenty-one percent of the Water District's budget. I think your auditor would tell you a twenty-one percent fund balance is quite adequate. So you have the fund balance to go ahead with the project while you wait for the state. Second option, okay, funded by a short-term borrowing. Again, listen to what your auditor said just last week. Don't delay important infrastructure projects when interest rates are so low. And as Dr. Tegmeyer said, this is a critical health issue. The town has borrowed money, short-term borrowing, for highway trucks and for non-emergency improvements to some town facilities. I think improving the health of our of our residents from babies to seniors. Is a critical issue that warrants the borrowing if you wanna go that rate. You want another option? Thank you, Council uh Supervisor um Slater for talking about the com- commercial water meter project. I hope those letters, if they haven't already gone out, will go out the by the end of this week. Because that's money into the district. The revenue probably won't show up until twenty twenty-one, but you know you can count on a significant amount of additional revenue. In the Water District. Last resort, and this is absolutely a that last resort, if you don't like the other three options, is raise the water tax. As as Dr. Tegmeyer has said, what people are spending either for fluoride supplements. Or by visits to the dentist will far outweigh any increase in in your water tax. There's one other issue and this I, this is a legal issue, I defer to the town attorney. If the board doesn't proceed with the construction now, all right, but this waits and waits and waits and waits. And waits and waits and waits for the state, what happens to that bid? Will the bid just expire? Will you have to eventually go out for a new bid at potentially a higher cost? I don't know the answer for that, so I'm urging you, talk to Pat Caparrell, the town controller. Go through these four options and vote by next week to give the au- the authorization to the to the uh Michael Quinn. And thank you, Michael, for all the work you've done on this project to get the construction started. And do not wait for the state to give you that written guarantee, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Siegel, is there anybody else for courtesy of the floor? All in favor to close courtesy of the floor? Any opposed, any abstained, courtesy of the floor is closed. Uh we do have Michael Quinn with us, our town engineer. Michael, do you wanna provide an update on the fluoridation project and what's the last we've heard from the state DOH on their grant?
Um so we're in regular communication with um Health Department officials, they understand our request. Um they've elevated our request. Um right, our, the um award, the end date of our award was uh May thirty-first, twenty twenty. So we um asked for a one-year extension to that date. And um apparently, there there's they're supportive of the request, but they're saying that this would go into the next fiscal year for New York State. And they they had to confirm how to do that or something, so that that's my understanding of what's happening behind the scenes. Um I know we've been on some recent emails, Supervisor, um so, you know, we're gonna continue pursuing that. Um the contractors are available, I'm in contact with them, they're they're, you know, ready to resume work. Um we are still working on the paperwork. Um there's MWBE, Minority and Women-Owned Business Enterprise requirements on the project. Um so we're working with the different groups from New York State on filling all those requirements. Um so we're we're working on the project behind the scenes. Um but the physical construction, we are holding off to make sure. Um you know, that the grant, which was nine hundred thousand dollars, um will be fully payable back to Yorktown. So that that's the reason why we have not proceeded with the fieldwork at this time.
Okay, any comments from the board?
Yes, uh uh I wanna I I wanna thank the town engineer for supporting this project. Because this is already too late, there was a six million dollar budget in the water department. And then I don't wanna say any, I don't wanna criticize anybody else, but the health is wealth. That's the only thing I wanna say, that you go to Budapest and you go in a fluoridation, uh a fluoride additive. Uh bath will cost you thirty-five dollar and you have to get you rent your own towel, you know? So this is really very good thing to have it, you know, and I I urge that we move forward as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Patel, anyone, any other town board members?
Yeah, I believe uh that money was already encumbered out of Kenny's budget, uh the uh the water budget. Um and we're just waiting to find out if we are actually gonna get that money from the state, number one, if I'm not mistaken, Supervisor. And number two, I I'd like to know at what point we're at with this thing, prior to. The uh COVID nineteen, COVID nineteen. Where where are we at right now?
Did we make any progress prior to COVID nineteen on on the project?
We have not started physical construction yet, um I believe the awards were done in December of twenty nineteen. Um we have signed contracts back from both contractors. Uh I know uh I had worked with um the prior town attorney on on getting all the contracts set up. Um you know, we have some paperwork, just um schedules, things like that. Um but that's the only work that's been done on the project, no physical work.
All right, but we have, we have plans and it's shovel-ready at this point in time?
Yes, we do. Uh in both contractors, we have a general contractor and an electrical contractor. Um I mean, they're they're ready to resume work, you know, pending pending our our go-ahead. But you know, I think my concern was that the agreement, that we we have a signed agreement for this grant, the nine hundred thousand dollar grant. And it does say that if we incur costs after the end of that agreement, they're not reimbursable, so that's why we need this extension.
Right, I thought you went after that, Michael.
I'm sorry?
I thought you were, you told us you were gonna try to seek that extension.
Oh yeah, we are seeking it, um we know. That we're dealing with are are prepared to give us that extension. Um but again, the one-year extension will take it past the end of twenty twenty. And apparently, that that's where we had a little bit of a hang-up on and it's on their side. Um and so we're in contact with them on a weekly basis right now to try to get that final approval.
Can I call you tomorrow and maybe I can make a few phone calls?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, let let's see if we can get the money here, I mean, that's that's the bottom line.
Yeah, well, that's the question, are we gonna get?
Are we gonna get it or are we not, and then we have to make a decision from that.
Right, got it.
Okay, very good. We're gonna continue with our agenda. Uh we are moving to public hearings, we're gonna convene a public hearing to amend chapter three hundred entitled zoning article seven. Entitled permitted special uses, section three hundred dash eighty, I see that the town clerk is showing that it was properly advertised. And we will, as a reminder, this is um just briefly and and our town attorney, Adam Rodriguez, who can jump in here, as well as our our planning director, John Tegger. Uh just quickly, this codifies the executive orders that we put into place. Um which allow for our restaurants uh and our and our retailers to be able to. Uh utilize the outdoors for their uh individual establishments. Uh again, this just codifies what's already being implemented across town. Uh and it would sunset at the end of this year. And do we have anyone for a public hearing?
Matthew, I think the interesting thing about what you did earlier this year was that. Now every community across the world is doing the same thing.
Uh huh. Yep, that's all right.
It's a good, so it's a good thing to have.
It it absolutely is, so again, um Town Clerk Quast, do we have anyone who's uh requested to speak on the matter?
No.
Okay, then I'll entertain a a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, and I'll also then, seeing how there's no public comment, entertain a motion uh to adopt.
Motion.
Second.
We adopt, we have first, we have second, all in favor, aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, and we have adopted the sidewalk cafes.
Supervisor Slater, to 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 uh just get a fir- little further clarification on Councilwoman Roker's uh. Comment about how everyone else in the world is doing it. How how did, how did we recently uh rate in uh, what was it, one of the magazines out there?
Yeah, Westchester Magazine said that the uh, thank you, Councilman Lachman. Um so Westchester Magazine did a profile on uh number of Westche- of number of communities in our county about what they're doing. In regards to phase two for our restaurants and and retail outlets and and uh. Uh I don't have the quote in front of me, but essentially it did say Yorktown had the best uh uh plan. Uh most organized plan and uh we are very proud of that. And we're proud that so many other communities, Councilwoman Roker's point, uh is following our lead. Uh and we're still, we're still working on more things, which I think um which I, which is the whole point, is this is just one piece of a of a much larger conversation that we're having. Um this is a byproduct of the reboot Yorktown Task Force and so I really do wanna thank all of our task force members for their for their input. Um you know, we are exploring other things, you know, um uh we've had idea, you know. I was with the John Tegger today, walking up and down Commerce Street. Um I mentioned an idea I had to to you, Councilwoman Roker, uh earlier today when we were at the demonstration. So so we're we're being very aggressive with other ways for us to support our local businesses and and uh and make Yorktown a. A pedestrian-friendly town and 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 grow our downtown. Uh and grow our and grow all of our hamlets, quite frankly, so this is just another step in that direction. So I I think it's a great thing for the town, a great thing for our businesses, and I appreciate everyone's support on it. So then we're gonna move forward uh to the next item on the public hearing agenda. Second, so this is the um, we're gonna convene the public hearing, correct? Town Clerk Quast, we're convening the public hearing to amend chapter three hundred entitled zoning by adding a new article of seven. Section three hundred dash eighty-one point five, uh entitled battery energy storage systems. And I'm gonna ask the town clerk just to hold up the air fryer that was properly noticed. I know that she's got it all there, perfect, thank you. Uh and I'm gonna ask our town planner, uh planning director, John Tegger, John, you've been working on this for quite some time. Um would you wanna just provide a a a overview for folks so they understand what it is that we're looking to? Um, would you wanna just provide a, a, a overview for folks so they understand what it is that we're looking to, what we're considering?
Sure, and, and thank you. Uh, so yes, we have been working on this for uh, close to a year. Um, and uh, at some point in December, uh, um, the town uh, did enact a moratorium, and for the reason that we were in the midst of looking at uh, enacting a law such as this, and we did have several applications that were put in and that were being reviewed in, uh, in front of various boards. Uh, and we did have many inquiries for similar installations. What this is for, this is for uh, battery energy storage systems, which can range from a small residential system that provides um, backup power to the residents, um, similar to what a generator would do, uh, all the way up to much larger scale um, installations that would provide energy into the electrical grid that would be used to forestall brownouts, which have become very common in the last decade or so. Um, they would help the um, sustainability of the grid, things of that nature. Um, so it is um, a law that is aimed at regulating those systems. And the, I think the cou- couple of the most important aspects of them, uh, of course, number one is the safety aspects of them. And as we have developed this, we have added and researched and added yet again, um, safety information and requirements to ensure that um, not only are the um, installations put in safely, that they are maintained safely, but in the event of an emergency, that there is a plan in place for our first responders to engage that emergency in a safe manner. Um, and if you know s- one of the um, one of the events that happened in another part of the country, uh, which involved uh, an emergency situation, the reason for the problem, not the, not the event itself, but the fact that a couple of the um, firefighters were um, were injured is because they didn't know how to respond properly. Since then, there has been uh, uh, code additions in international codes, and we are reflecting those in this law, and I actually have one that I wanna bring up that is just published now this year, uh, that I think that we should also um, add into the law that I will talk about a little bit. One of the things in addition um, that we had talked about in April that I wanna mention is another section of requirements in the standards. Uh, I brought this to the board on April. We had had some discussions with the Climate Smart Community Task Force. Um, and they had brought up a very um, interesting and I think salient uh, comment that uh, they, that the um, installation should have a cap, in other words, that they shouldn't be allowed to get too large. And so we had um, written a small section of the code to, to take care of that. I think it's a, a very good um, addition, and I, and I agree with the Climate Smart Communities on this point a hundred percent. And if I could read it to you, it, it will go in section um, seven J, which is entitled special use permit standards. And I am proposing that under number one, which is entitled lot size, that the following number two be added, which is as follows, lot coverage, lot coverage cannot exceed fifteen percent of the area of the lot, or thirty-three thousand square feet, whichever is less. Lot coverage shall mean the area formed by outermost perimeter of the footprint of all of the equipment and battery storage units, including the clearance spaces between the individual equip- equipment. What that means is the largest footprint of a battery installation uh, in partic- in, in, in the town of Yorktown will be thirty-three thousand square feet. If you have a ten-acre piece of property that you are considering for one of these, the most you could use of that property is thirty-three thousand square feet. To give you an idea of how it works, on a one-acre piece, fifteen percent of one acre is sixty-five hundred square feet. That's a smaller area. You could probably fit, uh, you know, maybe a one to three megawatt system, maybe a little larger. I'm not certain of that. Uh, it, obviously it scales up until you get to about a five-acre piece of property, where fifteen percent is thirty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy square feet, very close to the thirty-three thousand. So a five-acre property and above, uh, the most that, that you could utilize of that property is thirty-three thousand square feet. That would uh, guarantee that these systems in Yorktown do not get overly large and become something that we are not expecting nor actually want. So I wanted to uh, bring that up to you again and remind you and suggest that that be added uh, in, and I wanted to make it part of the record. Uh, as I mentioned before, there is a new NFP code, which is published just this year. I think it was adopted last year. The publication is now out um, for twenty twenty. It's entitled NFP eight-five-five. It is entitled standard for the installation of stationary energy storage systems. It is, NFPA is the Fire Protection Association. So this is directly speaking to the safety of the installations. Uh, speaks the language of the uh, first responders, the fire responders. And so uh, I'm proposing that under number eight of the law entitled safety, under um, paragraph C, which is the last paragraph that, of that, that uh, a reference be made to this section, NFP eight fifty-five, that all of the designs within the town of Yorktown need to comply to that, comply with that section of code. I would also like to point out that we have received um, from New York City Department of Environmental Protection, a comment letter dated this past May eighteenth. Um, I'm not going to read it. I'm, I'm under the impression that it is in your record. Um, but I would um, like to suggest that we consider some of the things in there. Uh, most of this is um, not uh, changing really the law, but it is citing some things that DEP would like cited, and I think are uh, fine to, uh, to cite in the law. Some of them that they have uh, listed in here, I think are already covered in other language in our law, but we can certainly go through that. I think that's the items that I wanted to cover. Um, the reason that we are pursuing enactment of this law is, as I had alluded to earlier, we had had several uh, battery applications, so this is a real situation that is coming at us. Uh, we had several other requests to do the same thing, although they, they didn't uh, come to any application in large measure due to the uh, moratorium. Uh, it reflects kind of a shift in energy policy that's going on in the entire country. Uh, and definitely in the state of New York. Uh, these are looked at and promoted by um, the uh, federal government, in, in particular, state government, as I understand it, because the grid is evolving. The grid needs to evolve uh, in a way that makes it more sustainable, uh, more um, survivable, uh, and can withstand some of the challenges that we have experienced in the last number of decades, which is a number of brownouts, and certainly long-standing um, periods of electrical outages. Uh, not to mention that Indian Point is also shutting down, and we need to supplement energy
Right.
production, and this isn't really production unless it's connected to a solar system, but certainly it is uh, putting aside energy for when you most need it. And so that's why we find ourselves here uh, looking at this law, and I think that it's important to recognize that um, the grid is important to um, the town. Uh, all residents, including commercial residents, uh, and um, the people that are, are just our regular citizens, so. Uh, that's why I think that we find ourselves in this position, so.
Okay, John, may I make some comment? I ha- I have a question. Uh, you know, the residential versus the commercial and the size of the storage, you know, and I think most of the batteries are now lithium related, right? There is no lead batteries at all for the storage going to be used, right? Am I right or wrong?
I, I believe that you're right, um, Vishnu, yes.
Yeah, okay, so how, how can you separate, you know, some safety requirement in a residential home, you know, with a one or two acre like that compared to fifteen, twenty acre farms? You know, is gonna be a separate rules for uh, you know, uh, for safety and the storage uh, area and other things involving that? Because you have to go and find out each individual, uh, you know, the, 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 the lot and inspect them and you know how, whether how much is the wetland, the trees, everything else. So it should be, uh, uh, you know, investigated by the planning board and whoever else, you know, tree, everybody else, and then make a decision, you know, the size of the projects and everything else. That responsibility should start in the planning or, you know, or distributed with among all the other uh, you know, volunteer board. So what do you think? You know, the difference between one acre versus in, you know, residential area? And then ten, fifteen, twenty acre, you never know whether they are gonna be building it, you know?
Yes, uh, well, well, this, there's, like I said at the beginning, there are many, uh, there's a whole range of sizes of these things. So in the, in the um, area of residential installations for the purpose of that single residence, in other words, backup power for that residence, that will be governed by the electrical code and uh, the NFP code, one that I just mentioned and other aspects of it. So the technical safety requirements will be governed by that. They will be required to have a building permit, uh, and they will be looked at um, by the building inspector. Anything that is over um, six hundred kilowatts will require, that is only really uh, a use that you wouldn't expect, and I doubt you would see to supplement the energy needs of a single residence. So that will be a special permit with the planning board. Uh, it will require site planning. It will require all of the um, standards that we have put in this um,
Right.
in this law, including the visual aspect, and of course, the safety requirements. So there, there's a whole tiered system. It's really only two tiers, but my point is that you can go down to a a system that you put in your garage to help your own energy needs if there's a power outage. You can also have um, entities that will, including CONED and NICE, and NICEG, that will put in larger um, batteries to, that are kind of the size for um, helping the grid itself, helping the energy system in a particular neighborhood or area. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Councilman.
Okay, um, have you had discussions with the fire districts?
With, with the fire district?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, they were, yes, we've had discussions with them. They were also involved in one of the applications. Uh, the one that um, is um, part of the Staples Plaza.
Okay.
So we, they had a presentation from the applicant, and they helped us actually through their commentary with the law, and I think we actually uh, helped them in terms of uh, embedding in the law the requirement to produce a safety plan. Uh, there has to be things on site that they um, have at their disposal to understand when they arrive at the site. And there's also uh, in the requirement uh, training that they get hands-on training from uh, in, in fact, this particular applicant. The other applicant that is behind them but is not uh, pursuing their uh, application right now due to the moratorium has also offered additional training, and I think most of them actually will.
All right, because what Mike, Mike, well, what I'd like you to do is after this meet, after this public hearing, like, where you wanna amend uh, what we already have? Would you send a copy of that out to both Mahegan and Yorktown Fire Districts?
Of course.
If I could jump in for just a minute, Alice, um, the Fire Advisory Board is going to be re-meeting again, so um, that might be the, the avenue to take with that, John. Um, and I'd be more than happy to walk that over there for you when I go to the meeting.
Great.
As a matter of fact, I spoke to Anita Hecker uh, this afternoon, and she says she was gonna talk to the uh, the other members, and they're gonna plan to have a meeting sooner than later, because we wanna have at least one before the, the summer break, so to speak.
Right.
Okay, that committee is made up of both fire districts.
Both fire districts, yes.
Will do.
Other questions from the town board? We did, uh, before we move on to uh, public, uh, getting public input, I just wanna make sure we take a step back and just make sure people understand, understand, people at home understand why we're considering this. Um, and I'm just gonna read this. This is straight from the NISERA website. Energy storage in New York. New York State is some of the most aggressive energy and climate goals in the country, including the clean energy standard, a mandate to get fifty percent of our electricity from renewable sources by twenty thirty, with a proposed expansion to seventy percent, a proposed target of a hundred percent carbon-free electricity by twenty forty, a forty percent reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by twenty thirty, saving a hundred and eighty-five trillion BTUs in end-use energy by twenty thirty through greater efficiency. Energy storage will play a crucial role in meeting these. Uh, these are states' ambitious goals. Storage will help integrate clean energy into the grid, reduce costs associated with meeting peak electric demands, and increase efficiency. Additionally, energy storage can stabilize supply during peak electric usage and help keep vehicle systems online during an outage. To John's earlier point, the grid is evolving. And we're seeing both from the federal level, uh, and this really started with the Obama administration, the federal level, uh, and our state level are really making concerted push to these renewable energy uh, uh, sources. But in order to capture and maximize those sources, energy storage is a key component.
Sure.
Uh, and, and so that's something that we just need to keep in mind. So this is, while maybe foreign, uh, for some, the energy storage is a very important part of the overall equation when we're talking about grid resiliency, when we're talking about rates, when we're talking about reliability. Um, that's the importance of energy storage in, in the, in the larger picture, you know, ten thousand feet up, and, and its importance for the grid. So that's why, you know, this isn't just because we have, you know, applicants or, you know, we're trying to do some science experiment, you know, in the, in the basement of town hall. This is because the grid is evolving, and we have to make sure that we're considering energy storage as part of that evolution, especially as John pointed out earlier, with Indian Point coming offline. We're seeing a greater emphasis here, uh, and a greater strain frankly here on the grid and greater emphasis on renewable energy. If we're going to be able to um, fully replace that energy from Indian Point, energy storage has to play a role in some facet, and it's very forward-thinking. I understand that. Um, I'm not afraid of being forward-thinking. I think this board's proven that already time and again, um, during, during this, uh, this year already. Just understand the overall equation and where energy storage fits in and, and key components. That's again why we're, we're being, uh, we're, we're considering this legislation.
Yeah, man, I also think that one part is, I don't know how many summers ago, but it seemed like we had like terrible storms all the time, and I remember being out of, being without um, energy for over a week.
Right.
And, and with, with this being not only storage, but it's kind of a backup.
Yes.
Yeah. The, the grid is never gonna get, in my lifetime, will never be redone.
Right.
And so we have to consider things like this.
And so, and the other thing I was gonna mention was, and, and I know Councilman Lachman and I, we both have solar panels on our homes. And so if we really wanted to take that next step, the next step uh, really is the energy storage system, which would take some of that energy, uh, obviously in storage, so that if we did have a storm, like you just mentioned, that's what would power up our homes and kick on. With the moratorium, that's currently not an option for, for, for homeowners. And uh, you know, I, I actually checked with the building department. We've had in the last, this year and last year, we've had, uh, I believe it's over sixty-five, just in the last eighteen months, sixty-five homes have, have put solar on their, on their homes.
That's great.
So we are seeing again, you know, organically here in Yorktown, a lot of residents are embracing renewable energy, and this just is a next step in that process. So we're gonna go to, unless, does any other members of the board have any comment?
You know, Matt, I just wanted to emphasize what you said. They've been working on, since I've, I've had my solar probably You know, Matt, I just wanted to emphasize what you said, they've been working on, since I've, I've had my solar probably six years now. I think they've been working on, uh, the battery storage for the home unit and it's going to be, you know, it's going to be another thing to look at. And this is going to be, you know, we're, you know, is it going to be outside, is it going to be inside, the safety and all, but it's coming, so. Being forward-thinking in this and making sure we get ahead of the game is definitely the way to go.
So I just want to, thank you, Councilman Lachman, I just wanted to, we did get a written comment from Grace Ciliano. Uh, Grace raised questions, uh, regarding, uh, making sure that. Enough research on the subject was completed by our staff, looking at other towns in our area and outside of New York City, uh, if they have installed them. Uh, in their town, uh, again, asking about research on the effects they have on the environment. Uh, and it was mentioned, oh, and questions about the noise, that there's noise coming from these batteries and if we've looked into that as well. We've, I don't know, I don't want to speak on that. Um, and also asked if there are any health issues with the surrounding properties that were, that were close. Um, and so those were the, those were the questions from, uh, Ms. Ciliano, Cecilia, no, excuse me. That, uh, she sent to the board and I assured her that it would be included as part of the record into today's public hearing. And now if, uh, we can move over to public comments, then I'm going to turn it over to our town clerk, Diana Quas, just to let us know who's going to be. Speaking. Who's that?
Doctor Hope.
Oh, 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 thank you very much, uh. I was just watching TV right now and I noticed that the, the town board's in session. I had come here earlier and I wasn't able to get in, but thank you very much for hosting this particular project. I think it's very, very important and I agree with Matt Slatter. Uh, I think that the changes in technology are quite evident. Uh, we're becoming, uh, you might say, an energy power in the world in the sense that we are. Uh, being more self-sufficient and even getting to where we'll be able to sell our energy commodities to other countries. Which we have been doing in some ways. Uh, nonetheless, uh, although I agree in principle with what Matt is saying. I think there is concern about the environment. Uh, one of our resources, one of our treasures up here, uh, is our environment. Uh, people come up here for reasons other than, you know, having a, an immediate source of energy. They come up here for relaxation and for basically appreciation of the natural world. And I think that's one of our resources that we must treasure, in fact, it's in our flag, okay? Uh, essentially, if you look at, if you unfurl the flag, you see, uh, that conservation, okay, plays a very, very important part. Uh, so as a biologist, okay, I'm quite concerned about these natural resources. Not only, not, not, not because I'm, you know, aesthetically concerned, but I think I'm biologically concerned. Uh, I think the growth of, for example, trees and, uh, uh, ver- various types of vegetation in the wetlands. Provides a very, very important service for detoxifying waste, okay, that might be in the soil. So I think, believe it or not, okay, a lot of these plants, without our, uh, knowledge. Are actually doing us a service without getting a salary. So we might as well take advantage of nature if it's doing, you know, some good for us. On the other hand, we don't want to poison nature, okay? So for example, you have lithium batteries. My wife back in the nineteen seventies when she was doing her doctoral dissertation, uh, actually worked on lithium chloride. Lithium chloride, uh, cause what is known as a condition called spina bifida. It's a neural tube defect which will cripple you, it's very, very serious. And what she did is she used basically experimental studies to show that it had an effect on. A vertebrae, an organism with a backbone. Uh, now, one of the, uh, batteries that you talk about, the nickel halide and of course the lithium fluoride battery. Uh, in high concentrations, they can basically leak into the environment. And they can, you know, go into our natural resources and necessarily into the, uh, reservoirs, okay. Which are tributaries from our wetlands. Uh, is there any, is there any way of testing, uh, at a water plant, plant, a water. A water resources, testing the effects of these inorganic, uh, uh, ions? To see if there's any leakage or maybe to make sure that we do have some way of monitoring the levels. Of these particular, uh, uh, battery storage facilities. So that's one of my concerns, okay, from a practical point of view. We don't want to poison ourselves, we could try to get rid of phosphates in the water. Uh, lithium is much more, uh, toxic than phosphates. So that would be one of my concerns. Uh, the other concern I had was the amount of vegetation around the facility. Uh, it was mentioned in the, uh, in the guidelines, uh, I believe I have this correct. That there should be, I think, ten feet, okay, distance from the fence area, any vegetation. Well, uh, and if there are any trees, okay, in the area that are sixty feet or more, okay? Uh, ten feet away from the actual fenced area will not appropriately, uh. Be a safeguard against damage to the facility and to other areas as well. Because if you have a tree come down, uh, there's always a damage of, you know, electrical arcing. And, uh, you know, you create a, a further disaster, so that's one of my concerns. Uh, whether trees should be allowed at all around a particular stored facility. And, uh, you know, this is something that we should consider.
Okay.
As, as a possibility. Uh, the other, uh, item. Okay, I'll start at that, okay, uh, I don't want, I don't want to take over.
No, it's okay, it's okay, Mr. Hope. I have to ask, did you have kids go to your town? I think I graduated with your kids.
You gra- you graduated with Kenny, okay? He's, he's got his, he's got his PhD in, uh, chemical chemistry down in Princeton. And he, he actually, I asked him, I said, how's this guy Slater, okay? Graduated with him. He's, he seems, he seemed to be a good guy, although he was a little quiet at the time. So he remembers you very well.
But please give him, give him my best, all right?
I will definitely, I will definitely, I will definitely message it to him.
Fantastic. Is there anything else that you'd want, any other comment you want to provide to the board?
I mean, I have, you know, other than the wetlands, the wetlands issue and the toxicology issue, okay? Those are my main, major concerns.
Yep.
Uh, and of course, you know, I know that the town board is sensitive to, you know, people who might be concerned about the noise. Okay, so I don't know, I'm not really sure how noise fits into batteries, okay? I know you have acid in them in order to, uh, increase conductivity between the anode and the top, and the cathode. And sometimes that acid will leak out, okay, so I know that's a problem.
Yep.
But I didn't know about the noise issue, so I didn't want to make any comment about something I didn't know anything about, okay? So, uh.
I believe, uh, Mr. Tegger, if you can comment on the noise, I thought that we had a conversation about this, my memory serves me correctly, but there is a decibel cap. On the, on the, on the systems and I believe that cap equated to, is it the same level of a conversation? That, is that, is that my memory served me correctly there?
I believe it does, it's not, uh, the noise will not exceed, uh, the level of a normal conversation. And, and most, most systems will likely be less than that.
So can I make?
How is the noise generated?
Doctor, Doctor Hoagler, thank you for many, many, many years in nineteen eighty. Nineteen eighty-three to eighty-six, we work on a water sewer and land with impact on the environment. And you, you know, I was the chair and you were all the workers, there are seven guys, professional guy, it was very nice and I still carry their record. All I want to tell you is about the battery, these batteries are not acid batteries anymore, you know, they are the lithium hydride. And encapsulated and, uh, uh, some of the new batteries, uh, you know, recently the Nobel Prize was given last year to the British scientists. They are, they have a coating, uh, where the carbon, uh, sits inside and very minimum leakage and very high efficiency. So that part is really good, the large quantity, I don't know, you know, larger amount, you know, like fifty acre land and twenty-five acre land. That data is not available, but I think, uh, you know, safety point of storing it seems to be quite, uh, regulated now. And, uh, very, very reliable, you know, so that's what I say, you know?
Well, thank you, Bishop, I didn't know that.
Well, thank you very much for clearing that up, I saw, yeah, I didn't know that.
Great. All right, Dr. Hoagler, if there's no other comments, we appreciate, we appreciate your input.
Well, I would, I would hope that you consider the environmental, uh, consequences that may arise from this and, uh. Reservations, okay.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Be raising with us. Thank you so much for joining us, all the best, okay?
Okay. I'll listen on TV, I guess.
Perfect.
Good to see you, Doctor Hoagler.
All right, and I'm sorry, Councilman Roker, did you have something to say?
Um, Susan had some comments, is she still there with us?
Yes, she's. Yes, I'm, I'm still here, okay, I don't go away. Uh, uh, please indulge, indulge me for a minute for breaking with town board procedure and I respect your procedure. But I have to make one comment following the courtesy of the floor and the comments about fluoridation, okay? With all due respect to, to the board members, you missed, you totally missed the point that I was trying to make. Which was start construction now and don't wait for the state, that was the point I was making.
Thank you.
Let's be the most, if we're optimistic, if we're optimistic, we know that we have no idea that if we're. If we're optimistic and we know that the state will extend the grant and eventually extend the, the grant and eventually give us the money. We don't know how long that will take, we are in very uncertain times right now. That's why it's important to get this project started now because we do have the money and we can do it. If we didn't have the money, it would be something else. Now let me just get back to battery storage and thank you for indulging my, my, my digression. Okay, um, my comments, I have two base, my comments fall into two basic categories. Zoning issue and then that's some specific provisions of the law. But, but first, but first I want to make it clear that I support the concept of, of battery storage. I think it's a good idea for all of the reasons that Mr. Tegger and Supervisor Slater have explained. But it's, but I, I support them in appropriate places and with the proper conditions. I also want to commend the town board for all the time it has spent going over the safety issues, which is a very critical aspect. Of this relatively new system, okay, uh, but I do have an issue, uh, with the, the law as it was noticed. As Mr. Tegger explained, okay, the board did discuss not in April, but it's, but in May. Some very significant changes to the law dealing with that maximum lot coverage. These are significant changes and the people who are addressing comments tonight did not have a chance to know about those changes. Because they were not in the law that was advertised or the law that was on the website. And I have spoken or have emailed, exchanged with town, with the town officials about the requirements in town law. About the need to have the hearing based on amendment, based on, the hearing should be based on what you're considering. So if you are going to add those amendments about the maximum lot coverage, which I support, I totally support the concept. You're going to have to close this hearing, re, go back, redraft the law with that change. Any other changes you want to consider, like the additional, the improvement and then re-advertise, which just means more delay. So I think you should have waited, uh, for this hearing. That said, let me just, um, go on to some of my, my issues about zoning. I agree that in the, in the proposed law, it's a combination of zoning and also issuing a special permit. But what I, and that's fine, what I think is wrong is giving a blanket approach to any residential. Any property, whether it's residential or commercial, you're, you're doing like a, almost a blanket rezoning of the town. You're changing the use from residential to an industrial use. And I don't think anyone would disagree with the notion that this is an industrial use. The basic foundation of zoning is you separate your uses, residential, commercial, industrial. That's why I think the better approach is to look at each, as each application comes in. Look at it on a case-by-case basis and then rezone it if you think it's an appropriate facility for that location. Because every neighborhood in Yorktown is different. There are three options for dealing with this rezoning approach. And I really think it behooves the town board, when they're considering a very significant new law. To look at all the possible ways that this new facility can be regulated. And so far, the board has only looked at one, what Nicerda put out. Yorktown doesn't have to follow the Nicerda, the Nicerda model, there are other options. Very quickly, you could, you could create a totally new zone, call it an, an energy zone. And you could have one section for battery storage, you could have another section for, for the solar farm, which is another critical. Piece of legislation that, that is coming down the pike. And then you can have all the conditions and provisions that you want, many of which are, you know, already in this law. You could then take that zone, apply it as an overlay zone, something that, that John has mentioned at a previous meeting. That he wants to do for special uses, it's a good idea, town already has an overlay concept for agricultural uses in the zoning code. You could take that same energy zone and use it as a floating zone. Now, I'm not going to go into the, the nuances of overlays and, or floating zones, okay? This is something that I think it behooves the board to discuss these options for looking at the rezoning. Done by the town board on a case-by-case basis, subject to a, subject then to a special permit either by the planning board or the town board. That's, that's up, up to you, I would, I would say it would be the planning board. But at least look at the options, contrast them, compare the advantages and disadvantages. Of you have four different approaches and see which fits Yorktown best. It doesn't have to be the one option that Nicerda, that Nicerda gave you. In terms of the, the provisions regulating this, there have just a few other, oh, and one other thing before I go into the, some specific provisions. Do any of you have any idea of what a battery storage facility would look like? I'll use as an example, not the Staples one, which is a very small one, even though it's in tier two. But what was proposed at Goma Court. You, you may have seen the article that I submitted to the newspapers, okay? The Yorktown News did not put the picture in, but the other day I sent you a photo of a facility with, with containers. The photo had six containers, the one on Goma Court is proposed for four containers. So this is what one would look like and I wish that we weren't in a Zoom setup and I don't have the, the technical, uh, equipment. To, to share what that photo is. But I ask you, do you think that kind of facility is appropriate in a residential neighborhood in Yorktown? Would you want it in your neighborhood if it happened to be a vacant lot? And I think there is a storage facility being built in Pomona, which is just across the river in, in Rockland County. You might want to take a drive over with or without a mask and go visit it and see what it's like. If, if you've never seen one and it's such a totally new concept. In terms of the, some of the provisions, um, that I think also have to be looked at. Um, the proposed law prohibits the storage facilities in flood plains or flood zones. Okay, but you say nothing about wetland buffers, right? Why not? And what's, if there's a rationale for prohibiting in flood plains, I'd like to know what your rationale. I'd like to know what your rationale is for not considering them in, in buffers. Mr. Hoagler, I'm sorry, I think it's a Dr. Hoagler, talked about the importance of wetland buffers, right? These are being totally ignored, all right? And especially if they're going to be in districts that rely on private wells. What if it's, the buffer serves a very critical function for, for filtering out toxic elements and also for recharging, for recharging the aquifer. And if you disturb that, you've lost that. And realize, most of the land left in Yorktown that's not developed, hasn't been developed for a very good reason. It's got environmental constraints, many of them are, are wetlands, and with wetlands come wetland buffers. On the screening, which I know the town board is concerned about, you're going to take down trees, you're going to take down mature trees and replace them with two and a half inch caliber trees. How long is it going to take to replace that in terms of buffering? Also, it should, the buffering shouldn't, it should specify that it has to be four season buffering because there's a big difference between having evergreens and having deciduous trees. Fencing, the law is talking about mandating a seven inch, a seven foot high fence. The current zoning law, I think, limits it to six feet. Does the planning board have the legal ability to override other provisions of the zoning code? I, I don't know this. And again, what kind of fencing? Planning board has done a very good job of trying to get more attractive fencing when a, a project that butts a residential neighborhood. And in fact, even on the recent Nestle Waters, where Nestle put up before the planning board, before it got planning board approval, it put up a chain leak fence and the planning board, to their credit, made them take down the chain leak fence and they're putting up another kind of fence. But if you look at the photo that I sent you of the Texas facility, it's a not, it's a chain leak fence and it's not very attractive. And what kind of fence will they need for security purposes? And security is a critical issue with this. Security is also an issue with lighting. The law says nothing about lighting. Will these facilities have to be lit 24/7? Does our current lighting code, which is a very possibly outdated code, can that deal with that? You've talked about the noise level before. Again, have you ever, have you ever visited a facility? Do you know what the noise is like? Not what you've been told, but what you hear for yourself? And is there a, a continuous hum? And a continuous hum might be different than an occasional noise. I think these, these are setbacks. Here's another. I mean, I've spent time and I have looked at this and the town board, while it's been concerned about safety, hasn't looked at this. The law says that the setback requirement would be for the underlining, underlying zone. Have you looked at what those setbacks are for side yards and rear yards in a residential zone? But it also says that the planning board can modify the setbacks. Again, I raise the issue, and this is for the town attorney to weigh in on. Can the planning board waive the setbacks in it, in the zoning code? There have been several recent site plans at the planning board where for good site design reasons, the plan needed, needed changes in the setbacks and the applicant had to go to the zoning board. So how are we going to work that out? There's also one other question that just is a very general question. It didn't come up in tonight's meeting, but it has come up in previous discussions. Put aside the, the overall benefits of, of having storage facilities, which I totally agree with. It's been said that if we allow these facilities in Yorktown, that it will benefit Yorktown residents because somehow we will get the electricity that's put back into the grid. I have a problem with that and not understanding that because we don't control the grid. So if a storage facility puts any number of kilowatts back into the, into the grid, it's up to Con Ed to decide how they distribute that electricity. And the town board may want to speak to somebody from Con Ed that, to, to really see if it's a benefit to Yorktown. It is an overall benefit and I'm not disputing that, right? But I just have an issue with trying to quote, sell this to Yorktown to say it's a specific benefit to Yorktown because we're going to get some of that returned electricity. I'm sorry if I took so long, but these are import, these are important issues. And again, I asked the board to take the time to look at the other zoning options and weigh the pros and cons of the different options. So we get the very best Barrett storage, battery storage facility that would be for Yorktown. And, and clearly this has to be re-advertised, a new draft has to be prepared with those maximum lot coverage. And you're going to have to have a new hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Siegel. I'm going to, just in regards to the process, I'm going to see if our clerk would like to comment on that or town attorney, town clerk was like to speak.
Number five is what the town board, or is what the town board agreed to refer out, which was done on April 21st. Also, it was changed on the website April 14th. And our notice went out as a convene. We treated it as a new public hearing. The only reason why you saw reconvene on tonight is because in a discussion with our planning director, he did not feel there was any changes, he did not recall them. After thinking about it, he did. So we actually treated it as a convene. And I know it stayed on the, the agenda reconvene, but that was not how it was treated when we sent it out.
My point was that it's not, whether it's a reconvene or not, the issue is that if the board plans to adopt, put aside all of the other changes that I talked about that, that you have to look at. But if you just consider the, the first change, the first amendment that John talked about, the maximum lot coverage, which I think you'll all agree is a very significant change from, from the original one that just said thirty thousand, you know, all it had was a minimum thirty thousand square, thirty thousand square foot lot. And I think there's even some discussion whether you want to increase that to forty thousand, okay? Some of you may remember that I did sue the town over the tree law, okay? And the issue of amendments being added to the law after the hearing was closed, okay? And the issue that the court just said was that the, that the amendments that I was concerned about were not significant, substantial enough. I think this maximum coverage issue is a very substantial one that people should have known about and they didn't. So they can't come and speak at the public hearing. So it, it, it's strictly procedure, okay? And all it means is if you close the hearing tonight, you go back to the drawing board with, even if you only do John's changes, plus that, the, the, the fire safety one, okay? That it should be a new vet draft should be prepared and that advertised for the hearing. So you've, you've lost, you know, another, let's say, month. But, but you're be, doing it the proper way to forestall any potential challenge to the law. Not that I'm planning to challenge anything, don't, don't be concerned.
Yeah, can I point something out?
Yeah, if you want to go ahead.
I just want to point out that that change is a restriction. So if anybody looks at this law that is in favor of mega systems being installed and now they are, they can't, which I don't think we're going to have. So it, it, it is a restriction and reigns in potential impacts. So I'm not sure that, I, I would question and, and leave for Adam whether or not it needs to be re-notice for that reason. Not to mention that we came upon that during the public discourse on the law. And I, and I happen to think that changes made pursuant to public discourse on a law, in particular, when they are making the law further restrictive, I happen to think you can move forward on that. That's my opinion, that's, that's my opinion and I'll, I'll leave it to Adam and Diana on that.
At, at the end of the day, the changes arose out of the referral process. They've been discussed at the public hearing, they're discussed at the outset of the public hearing, the public had an opportunity to hear them twice, actually. And the changes, in my view, are minimal. The test under the case law is basically whether there's a substantial amendment and whether that, that amounts to a change in the purpose of the law. And in my view, this doesn't even come close.
That's a good point. It, it was a product of a referral to the climate.
No, planning board never reviewed that. It, it, it's, it's only a procedural issue. I think my other concerns about how to handle the rezoning, you know, are, are, are the significant issues, plus, plus those other changes in the, in some of the provisions.
Is there any comment or questions from the board on the substance?
I have a question to Susan. So you're saying, you're, you're suggesting that we consider changing the law so that the applicant would come before the town board for a rezoning and then move over to the planning board for a special use. Is that correct?
That, that's right. You would, you would set, you, you would, you would adopt just the way you have different residential zones. You have different commercial zones, industrial zones. You would have an energy zone. And you could have the, the same provisions, you know, in that zone as you would have for, you know, that you would have now, okay? So it would be limited to special permit. But this would be applied when the applicant came in and said, this is the parcel I want to do it on. And you would say, yes, it works for this, okay? We'll rezone it, all right? And then you do the special permit route. But you might look at it and say, no, this, this is not appropriate. We have visual concerns. We have other environmental concerns. You, you might get neighbors who are very much against it. That's a political decision for the board to make. But you would weigh all of the factors and you would say, is it appropriate for this specific parcel of land? Because every parcel of land is different. And you basically have, have no idea. Now, I know that the facilities can only be located within a certain proximity to the grid. So that's a natural limitation. But does the board have any idea how many potential parcels there are? And I was also thinking about the, the maximum lot coverage, which in concept I totally agree with. And that was one of the, my initial concerns about the law. So let's say I have, you know, a 10 acre parcel, all right? And I'd like to make some additional money. My house is all the way on one side of the parcel and another side of the part of the parcel is close to the grid, all right? But I'm, I'm limited to thirty three thousand square feet. Well, I can just subdivide, all right? I'll just subdivide my property off and I can, I can do some nagling around, okay? I, I, that, that may or may not be an issue. I don't know. But the thought came to me, you know, with it. But I think that town board has more control and zoning is a town board issue, all right? And by saying anyone can, you can do it any, any place, you're giving up that control to the planning board. Now, I have no issue with the planning board, okay? And I, I think your special permit should be at the planning board because they're the ones that have more expertise in land use. Thank you, John. I see it, I can vaguely see a smile on your face, all right? But, but the zoning is strictly a town board function, all right? And again, you are doing a drastic, drastic change from a residential to an industrial use, all right? Without knowing exactly where, where it could be located. And every neighborhood is different.
I wouldn't call all of these uses industrial uses.
Well, that's what I was going to ask.
Well, look at that, look at that picture that I sent you.
But that is, that's a big six, a six container plant.
Yeah, so chop off two. The Goma, the Goma Court is four. Not that much of a difference. Look, look, look.
You're concerned, but it sounds like what you're talking about is specifically tier two systems. Is that, is that a fair understanding? Because that's what I'm getting.
Oh, sure. Yeah. What you do in your home is that, that's, that's not an issue. Okay, I haven't.
I want to make sure that the public understands though, that we're not talking about all systems. You're talking specifically tier two systems, which could include, under those parameters as they're defined, the larger energy storage, battery storage systems that you see at, you know, substations, that you see at energy centers, that you see at, John, where were some of the larger ones that we looked at? I think there was one at a university.
There's some upstate.
Yeah, though, but so I just, I just want to make sure we're crystal clear here. We're talking tier two systems.
Thank you for clarifying that. I, I didn't, I didn't think about the need to clarify that. So when you, so the, the, the new energy zone would clearly apply, it depends how it's written. I, I really haven't thought this through. You, you could say the tier ones, which are just, which are basically for houses, right now they just go to the building department for, for building permits, subject to, you know, needing all the proper codes. They, they don't need a special permit. So yeah, this would only be for the, for the tier twos. And there's quite a variety in tier twos. The Staples one is, is very innocuous, totally innocuous, okay? But the Goma Court and I, those are the only two that I know about, all right? So I'm just saying, Goma Court is very, very different, okay, from, from the Staples. And it's interesting that John has said that there have been inquiries for other facilities. Has that information been shared with the town board? Do they have any idea where these other facilities are located? That would be interesting.
You know, the, the photo of the building you sent us would probably, we would probably not see it in Yorktown because you do have to screen. Am I correct, John?
Say, say the last part again.
Do you have to screen your facility from your neighbor?
Under, under this law, yes, you do.
That's what I'm saying to Susan, that the picture she sent us was of a, a facility by itself, no screening. So that wouldn't be in Yorktown.
Right. And the, the thing is with the, the way this is written, if you, if you couldn't properly screen it, the planning board would have the authority then to deny the permit because it wouldn't, did not rise to that special standard for the special permit. And I just want to add one thing relative to the use. I kind of reject the industrial classification here. And the reason is this, this is, let me put it this way. Infrastructure is allowed in all of our, all of our zones throughout the entire town because it's required and it's necessary. That includes electrical infrastructure, which this is. It includes wastewater infrastructure, water infrastructure, telecommunications infrastructure, including cell towers, telecommunication buildings, so on and so forth. In Yorktown, there is upwards of, I believe, about three hundred parcels of land that are devoted to this type of infrastructure, plenty of which is devoted to electrical infrastructure. So to separate this out as, as some alien use that we've never seen before, I kind of disagree with that. I don't think that's the proper characterization of it. This is part of the grid. It will become a necessary part of the grid, I believe. So I think that it should be, and as, as it is now, all of those infrastructure facilities, such as switching stations, substations, so on and so forth, transmission lines, are specifically allowed in, in our zones, including our residential zones. With the ability to screen it or the requirement to screen it, I think that's how we cover the, you know, the characterization that you're going to wake up and find this industrial situation next door to you. It will be screened. If it can't be screened, it should not be allowed.
Well, I, I, just to, to comment, screening is, is very subjective. And when you have to cut down mature trees, okay, to, to, for your clearance, all right? You're not going to replant the same size, okay? And the law talks about berms and whatever. I think that's, that's just too, too subjective, too loosey goosey. There's an issue of the, if you combine the, the screening limitations and reservations that I have with, with the setback and, and depending upon the topography, the setbacks in the underlying zone may be totally, totally inadequate. It's a combination. Plus you deal with, with four, four season screening. And, and then again, the. I I and and then again, the subs, the utility substations, I think, are totally different animals. They're they're totally different animals than than this kind of facility. And as far as the the picture from Texas, um, I, that's why I think go look at Ram, go look at the one in Pomona. It's under construction. I have no idea. Um, I I know where it's located. I can give you the address. But I don't know where it is in terms of of screening. And and a rendering could could show anything. Go take a look. And the the Goma Court, the Goma Court are containers. But from the the very little I know, and it's it's not very much about battery storage facilities. They, there are different kinds. So if it's not a storage container, a a container like a tractor trailer container, what else could it look like? We don't know.
Can I can I jump in a second? So we've been talking about a lot of subjectiveness. And maybe this, maybe that, and that's that's why we have the process that we go through. Uh, I think if we sit here and try to iron out a law that 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 addresses every single concern you brought up. We will all be dead and buried before it comes around.
No, no.
No, yes, yes. We've been we've been going back and forth. And if you look at in particular, you're and you just said it, and and I, you know, you sent that picture from Texas, we don't know. And and the question came up when the people were there. We don't know what the facility will look like because each facility is different. Each storage unit, depending on size, would be different and could be dressed up in different ways. Matter of fact, I think it was council, Councilman Patel, who hammered the guy on wanting that information. And he did a good job at getting it, getting it out of him. And there, you know, it could be mature trees, it couldn't be mature trees. I think we need to look at, look at the the facts, and I also think it's up for the board to to take the advice of our professionals. To to see if this falls under infrastructure, uh, which the point we draw up from the very first on this. This is electrical infrastructure. This is something that's that is not only going to be affecting the town, but each individual resident soon. The more solar we move through, the more they're going to try to move the battery packs. And actually, it'll sooner or later start affecting our cars even more than it is.
Right.
So this battery storage is is really what's happening in the future. And I think that we need to take a holistic approach and look at the planning department and look at the town board to do that. And make sure that that we, that the town standards are adhered to. But I do not think that we should be cutting out and saying, well, let's figure out 35 different maybes in this law. Because, you know, we'll have a half a parcel in Yorktown that'll be that we'll be able to approve for this project.
I I, as I started my comments by saying, I support the concept. I think the town, the town should allow them, okay? And and that's why you should do it through a rezoning and then then leave it to the planning board to to deal with, you know, all the nuances of, is the screening adequate? Is the fencing adequate? How will you deal with the lighting, all right? That that I'm willing to 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 give on. But go back and and do it, the rezone the parcel on a case by case. Know know what you're allowing in. And as one planning board member said, and Ed, I I know that you're you attend the planning board meetings. Um, I don't know if you were there when one when one planning board member who's who's very knowledgeable, you know, in terms of town law said. It's very difficult to deny a special permit. It's very difficult to deny a special permit.
But I and I don't, but I don't think that spot zoning everything is the answer, Susan.
It's not spot zoning if it has a specific purpose and this I have to defer to to what to our uh, town attorney. But I think a law like this, we're very, very unique. And it frankly, I'm going to say the same things when it comes to the solar law, which I totally support. All right, um, and this could be, you want to, you have to move ahead on the battery storage. I understand that because you've you've got the moratorium. But I think I've I've said enough. I've given you some, hopefully, some food for thought. That's that's that's.
Definitely given us a lot to think about, and and we, of course, appreciate your input. Um, we do have other people who want to speak, though, on the matter, and we'll have Town Clerk Quast. Uh, let me know who's next.
Mr. Jay Kupstein.
Okay, Jay, how are you tonight?
I'm doing fine, sir. How are you?
Doing good, thank you. Thanks for joining us. We appreciate your input.
Okay, and um, this is not going to be a harangue. First, I sent everybody on the board an email. I got no responses, so I'm going to bring it up tonight. We are talking apples and oranges with these plants. Small battery power plants, absolutely, I am in favor of them. Even some of the large ones. However, we've been given and the the residents, the citizens have been given inaccurate information. Battery storage is for peaking. Councilwoman Roca, if you have a blackout, those batteries will do nothing other than in a very, very short period of time.
Okay.
In a brownout, they may help to fill the gap to maintain voltage. A battery needs to be recharged. Batteries at homes that have solar, they will be recharged from the solar. The commercial applications get recharged from the grid. If the grid is down due to down wires, the batteries cannot be recharged. As I said in my email, what happened with the wildfires out in California, where the power outage is extended into weeks. The battery would have done nothing. So please, don't sell, tell the citizens exactly what they're getting in this law. They are not getting something that will replace their electricity if you have a week without power, because these batteries will not be able to be recharged. End of comment.
Thanks, Jay.
Thanks, Jay, and I want to apologize for not responding to your email. I I I did have all intentions of doing so.
I think you, I read it, but.
I think full responsibility for not, so my 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 sincere apologies for that. Uh, but I did read your email. Um, but I apologize for not acting on it. Uh, next, Diana. We have anybody else?
Warren, did you want to say anything?
Yep, uh, thanks for calling on me. Um, I'll keep it brief. Um.
Warren, can you just reintroduce to everybody, please?
Yes, I am the Chair of the CSC Task Force. Uh, my background's in energy for now going on eight years. And I work on the demand response utility front, done solar installations. Um, my most of my experience is on the tech side, uh, and working with utilities in the energy space. Um, my hope here is to help contribute along with my peers and colleagues on the task force to help provide support for legislation such as this one. Um, one thing before I continue, of course, uh, the gentleman who went before, um, I'm blanking on her name. Uh, if anyone, I'm sorry.
Mr. Kupstein, that one? Or are you talking about Dr. Vogler?
Uh, I can I can respond to both of those. Um, more importantly, on the microgrid and as that is a point that I support quite a bit. Uh, so the value of battery storage in terms of the grid as it is being rearchitected or modernized, if we must say. Is it plays a role in helping build out resilient microgrids. Now, battery storage, as you mentioned, doesn't provide power, doesn't generate power, but it can deliver it based on that storage capacity. Um, and there is numerous pieces of literature out there from microgrid development. That's where tier two really comes in of most value. They're sizing these systems such that they can uh, support entire communities uh, for extended periods of time. Um, the wildfires were actually in California. They realized that I think it was 2,000 wildfires, uh, specifically, I can go dig up that were actually caused due to utility owned equipment. Uh, whereas if they had built microgrids with energy storage at a town, community kind of level. They would have been able to continue to keep the grid operational in different regions, recharging the batteries as needed. Um, so that they could provide the necessary resilience, um, even pairing it with solar um, in those local communities. Uh, community solar is huge here in New York. Um, which is where battery storage really plays into in this architecture. So passing this legislation would be a huge value to the town from a few different perspectives. Um, tier one, we understand the value there. It helps provide additional resilience to the homeowner. But since it seems like the comments are mostly around tier two tonight. Um, the biggest thing to really consider, this is a necessary component for the future of how the electric grid is going to be working. Um, and by future, I don't mean a decade from now. We're already starting to see movement. Um, I believe just last week in Maryland, Excel Energy, um, along with local residents, governments um, and multiple other stakeholders passed 16 microgrid developments to help provide resilience. Um, in California, they've been excessively aggressive in developing these. And without battery storage, the only alternative that they'd have to turn to are diesel or natural gas standby generators. Uh, which kind of pushes away from the renewable posture that we're trying to take as a state and, of course, as a town here in New York and Yorktown. Um, so I guess to summarize uh, the the whole of the comment. Um, having this legislation passed, um, and I believe what we've done so far uh, in or uh, what the town board has been able to do in terms of modifying this, uh, along with the support from the task force. Um, I do believe we're on the right path and ready to help um, introduce battery storage into the town and happy to answer any questions via my comments around the technicalities of it. Um, I've seen these systems, played with them, um, and I know multiple people in the industry if we if we need any uh, technical background on uh, things that would like to be exposed. So happy to answer any questions that might come up from this comment.
Questions?
Uh, can I ask some questions?
Yeah, Councilman.
Absolutely.
You know, oh, you like, I'm I'm just talking about the large scale only, okay? Not just a private home. And if you have a land far away, you know, and there is no electrical, you know, the grid lines, who will pay for it, you know? Because somebody has to pay for it to transfer from the farm, electrical farm to the the grid, you know, the connections everywhere, they don't have it. Is there anything you want to make a comment on this kind of issue? You know, it's far away land somewhere on, you know, somebody has 108, 10 or 50 or 10. And there is no electricity now, so that who they can sell it, how they can.
So if I if I understood your question correctly, if someone has a massive plot of land, let's say, in upstate, upstate New York. And there's no electrical infrastructure, how does that play into deploying battery storage or even solar?
Yeah.
So so most developments don't, uh, because most of these developments are done by private companies and suggested to the utilities. Um, it's usually privately. It's a it's a form of, I guess, uh, um, not in the legal sense, but it is a form of a public collaboration with private entities. Um, and uh, most of these projects, if any of them are are not done in areas that substations are not readily available. Um, that's why, especially for microgrid development uh, on resiliency fronts. Um, there are, there are a number of locations looked for. Um, but specifically, they're typically looking for three phase lines and they're looking at substations that require minor modification. Um, to be able to accept battery storage or solar, depending on the size of that system. Um, now, there are edge cases where the utility or the EPC that is doing the development of the solar farm will actually pull lines out. Um, but those are in nowhere near Yorktown or likely in New York State that we'll see anytime soon. Um, but if you want to look at one such project, which is now the largest solar project, uh, take a look at the Gemini project that um, the Trump administration just signed off on.
And how many megawatts was that? How how large?
I think it's 490 megawatts, which is, I think, the eighth largest in the world and the largest in the U.S.
When you look at these projects, what benefit do they give the community?
So when when we talk battery storage, um, if we want to look beyond the Sustainability Act uh, standpoint of helping us transition more towards sustainable sources. Um, it's really resilience that battery storage is um, in the conversation of. Um, if you look up or you dive into the term microgrid, um, that's where battery storage is of utmost value and the whole reason this market has evolved and accelerated at the pace it has. Um, so it's usually on a resilience front, so ensuring a higher uptime. Um, reduced number of blackouts and brownouts across the board.
Yeah, do you know, for the microgrid tech, uh, rack of my brain and and but New York State has started to implement some micro tech, some microgrid technology, correct?
I believe they are starting to do pilots as well.
Yep.
I can't point my finger on a exact pilot project, but I can find that on nicer's website, I'm sure.
So in your in, so in your in your expertise, the the greatest benefit to tier two is the evolution of these microgrid systems, which is what you're saying we're going to be, which we already are driving towards uh, from an energy, uh, energy policy perspective.
Correct.
Okay.
The predominant value that people will see is if you want to, if you want to learn up on the space. Um, microgrids are the key area to look, and that's why battery storage might end up in a residential zone or um, or similar, because it just depends on the location. Um, and there's a lot of selection that goes into it, which is where they would, you know, work with John, planning board and such.
I know, and I know that we got some feedback from the Climate Smart Communities Task Force, which you chair here in in Yorktown. Was there any other feedback besides what uh, we discussed with John and what John presented to the board that you would want to uh, share with the board?
Um, as of now, I haven't heard any comments back from um, our team um, beyond the modifications we've helped uh, work with uh, John on uh, in terms of the legislation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Just a uh, just a quick statement. Uh, the the question was raised on on Goma Court. Um, what size units would be put in there? It's my understanding, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, they're going to be about the size of a tractor trailer shipping container. Which are about 48 feet long by eight feet wide by about eight feet tall. That's the, that's the size they're going to be putting there, and I believe there's going to be four put in there, John?
That's correct. That's about the size that they are. They're a little bit longer and a little bit thinner than that.
Yeah.
Essentially, they, if you looked at them, you'd probably be put in mind of that that shape and size.
Tom, what is a commercial zone does for Goma Court?
Zoned as, uh, it's a commercial zone, the the office zone, actually.
All right, so we're not talking Gomer Street.
Yeah, we're talking about Gomer Court.
I'm just making sure everyone.
Yes.
Late, so I'm making sure we're very clear with this.
Yes, it's on the property where the auto body shop is.
Right, okay, thank you.
Now, as now as you drive by, you see the uh, the High Line trucks that are parked in there.
Yeah.
You drive by en route since.
Right, and and.
Go ahead, John.
Go ahead. No, I I apologize for interrupting.
No, no, no. Um, and and, you know, they, the, from what I understand where these containers are going um, or these storage units, I'm not going to quote the containers, uh, where they're going would be um, kind of south. Uh, I I guess it would be kind of east of, I'm sorry, west of uh, where the trucks are parked in that one lower corner in there, if I'm not mistaken. Um, in 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 that general area, so. In that general area. So they, you know, they would always be camouflaged by the by the marsh grass, not marsh grass, but the trucks there and the berm that's on the other side.
Yes, and the planning board did ask them to do additional screening, which they did. But with the implementation of this law or the enactment of this law, I should say, that would become a hard requirement, and I would guess that they would have to do a little bit more work to show that it is adequately screened.
I don't know. I think this gives us a big leap into the future.
Oh, without doubt. Very forward-thinking. Don't, don't.
Yeah.
Very forward-thinking.
It's a good spot for it. You know, it's, 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 there's nothing else around it or that could be put around it at this point.
The Gomer Court project, correct?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Well, there comes a point where as responsible representatives, we have to look at the supply of energy.
Yeah, yeah, without a doubt. You know, energy policy, you know, I can tell you from my time working in the state senate, energy policy turned into one of our key issues, specifically because of the closing of Indian Point, and we were engaged conversations about what the state's energy policy was transitioning to than we ever thought we would be involved in. And so this, you know, to Swarnoff's point, you know, the microgrid is the place where we're gonna land.
Right.
This is just another, you know, this key component of getting us to that spot. You know, so I think we got a lot of great feedback from the public tonight. I think that, you know, obviously, I think, John, we have to go, I want to, I would say we have to go and just review what those comments were with you and Adam, just to make sure that we're addressing them properly within the proposal. And then we can reconvene. I would, I would unless they make comments on this. Otherwise, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the hearing.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So adjourn the hearing? And thank you, everyone, for their comments. We do appreciate it. Very helpful as we continue down this road.
You absolutely get smarter about energy.
Yeah. Without a doubt. So we've got some resolutions to wrap up the evening, and I've got comments on a couple of them that I think need some explanation, so we're gonna begin. We have a resolution to approve lead agency, negative declaration and authorizing the MS4 stormwater management and tree removal permit for construction of a single-family residence with site and driveway improvements at 320 Ellington Road. We heard this at last week's we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a resolution to authorize the comptroller to process following budget transfer. This is for payment for the LeBurge Group for the preparation of our funding needs assessment. We've completed our end of that. All of our department heads were interviewed. They all submitted documentation to LeBurge Group, and they are preparing that final needs assessment for us, and we're looking forward to that. So I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second, all in favor? Aye. The opposed, motion carries. Next resolution is to authorize the supervisor to sign an agreement with Thompson and Bender for additional services not to exceed additional $30,000. I want to be very clear on this. So previously, the town board approved the contract with Thompson and Bender. We, when we sat down to go through what the tasks were, we did an assessment of where we as a town were at that point in time. Operationally, we, it's a crawl, walk, run conversation, and that's exactly how I posed it to Thompson and Bender, and they've been great. We were trying to run before we were crawling, because we didn't have, operationally, we didn't we didn't have a communications apparatus for the town. And I think we've seen the importance of that, especially during this pandemic. And so while we set out down one path, it shifted quickly to a different path based on our needs. And I think they've done a terrific job, I really do, and they are becoming more ingrained in the operations of the town, more involved in conversations that we're having from a communication standpoint. And so I don't think it's so much about rebranding. I think it's more about communications, because it's an operational deficiency that we collectively identified early on. So this extends, this extends the original contract for an additional amount. Now get them through the year, again, acting as, from an operational standpoint, our communications team. And so I will, I wanted to provide some explanation as to what this is. And so I will entertain a motion to authorize supervisors to sign an agreement with Thompson and Bender for additional services not to exceed an additional $30,000.
All move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Matt, can I just say that years ago, there was no need for a PR firm. There is today. You have to have a voice.
Yeah, well, operationally, you need a communications person, staff, something, you know?
That's what's more money.
Yeah, and so, you know, whether, listen, whether we, you know, we continue down this road with Thompson and Bender, and I think they've done a terrific job, I'm not, I really do. But it's an investment the town and the town board needs to decide how we want to make moving forward, because operationally, you need a communications person, period. That's just how the world works these days. So that, so that motion carried. We're gonna authorize the town to issue a request for proposals for a concession at Railroad Park.
Motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Authorize supervisors to sign a COVID-19 screening agreement with non-town users of the Albert A. Capellini Community and Cultural Center. Entertain a motion.
All move.
Motion carries. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
There are two ayes.
Aye, aye, aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Motion carries. I know it's late, but Mr. Rodriguez, did you want to provide some commentary on that, so people understand what this is?
Sure, it's basically an agreement that we're putting into place with non-town entities that rent leased licensed space at the ACC, AA, CCC. To ensure that they are implementing, you know, the relevant COVID-related guidance, screening, you know, and monitoring so that everyone's safe and building.
Great, thank you. Next, we're gonna authorize an increase in WSA's contract in the amount of $12,500 and authorize the comptroller to transfer $12,500 from capital contingency A1990 dot four nine nine dot one to the Railroad Rehab Capital Project JJ7110 dot zero two zero zero. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Tegger, did you want to just provide commentary as to what that was, real quick?
Sure, in the body of it, there's an explanation, but I hope I can be clearer than that writing, which is that during the DOT approval of the final construction documents, which they actually approved before you can take it out to bid, there is a whole host of things that need to be done, partially for their own way of doing things, and also for the way they actually set up their payment, which is a proprietary software package. So that took a lot of work, and it ended up costing us, you know, the architect spent another $9,000 on his contract document segment of his contract. And then the second thing was the $3,000 of the reimbursables is always part of any contract, but never really has a number attached to it until you get to the end. So that's how we ended up where we are.
Great, and then I appreciate that. And then lastly, before we adjourn, we discussed the matter in closed session, and the board has made a decision. Last week, we heard from Sunrise Solar regarding, excuse me, regarding the solar carport project over at Granite Knolls for the parking lot. Since that conversation was had, we've done additional legwork. We've had additional conversations. We've had vendors reach out to us. We've spoken with ConEd. And quite frankly, I can say, at least for, I can speak for myself, and I don't know if any of the board members want to speak up on this, but I was not frankly comfortable about moving that forward without an RFP. After having all the conversations that we did have, now and then, those conversations solidified my apprehension about moving forward without an RFP. And so the board has decided to do the following, and I'm gonna read this, and we can have a discussion. Whereas the board adopted a resolution on June 9th, 2020, it authorized the supervisor to execute a lease option agreement with Sunrise Community Solar LLC for the installation and operation of a carport solar system, subject to approval of the town attorney. And so resolve that the board hereby rescinds the Sunrise resolution and be further resolved that the town is authorized to issue and advertise a request for proposals to install and operate a carport solar system at the Granite Knolls Sports Complex. And I'll entertain a motion. Patel, we have a second from Councilman Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I don't know if any of the board members speak on that?
I think it's a long time coming, to be honest with you. I think this should have gone out for an RFP long ago, as we've all discussed, I think, in the, in closed session, that this is just something that should have happened a while ago.
And you know what? It just, it just goes to show that we sometimes look at a situation and come back around and realize that, you know, just from the betterment of the town, the transparency, this is the way to go. I know we were listening to the original vendor, and it seemed like there was the the impetus that if we did not move this right away, it would never move. But fortunately, you know, we did our due diligence, found out a little different, and definitely agree that, you know, pushing this into an RFP process is the best thing for the town.
You know, I was concerned when he spoke to us last week and said we had to do it. And my problem was, why do I have to do this right away when I've never even seen the document? And he was supposed to send it to us last week, and I never got it.
Well, we can get more money now, a little bit at least, and we have the right, you know, information. And we can decide, you know, how we are going to move forward.
Yep.
Make the town a little bit.
I'm comfortable. I'm better now.
I'm much more comfortable with an RFP. So Ms. Rodriguez and our town clerk will be working on that hopefully very quickly. And we can hopefully come back soon with some proposals, and then we can, the board can then decide how they want to move forward. And with that, that ends the business before the board. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No, we got one more, I think, Matt.
Which one's that?
Um, hang on one second. The authorize supervisor to sign contract amendment for the pump station?
No, we've, we pulled that off.
Yeah, we pulled off. Okay, all right.
And we pulled that out for a very specific reason.
Right.
Councilman Roca and I, earlier today, were with County Legislature Smith. We asked for his assistance, and so we're gonna, we want to try to make another run at at the County Department of Health, who is mandating a fence around this substation off of Juniper Court. The residents are obviously adamantly opposed, and so we're trying our best to see if we can get additional assistance from our partners and governments. So we're gonna hold off on that for the time being.
I was involved with that, with you at that point in time with the
Right, you were there. Yep.
Yeah, and I just saw it on the agenda, and I said, oh, I know we wanted to address that.
Yeah.
You know, the Health Department, hopefully that the legislator's gonna be able to help us out, because with the unfunded mandates that they're putting forth to communities, it's getting a little bit ridiculous.
Little is right.
Especially when it was already approved without a fence, and people are expecting that.
Yeah.
Yep.
You know, so.
So thankfully, we ran into him today, and so he's offered his assistance, so we'll see what we can do. That's why that resolution was removed from the agenda, so.
Okie dokie.
Okay, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
And I, yeah, second.
All in favor?
Good night, everyone.
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.